In accordance with the local law of council, local law one, as the procedures for our local law meetings. Please stand. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses; as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power, the glory are yours now and forever. Amen. While we stand, I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Barakalong people of the Gunai Kernai nation. Pay my respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. If there are any other First Nations people here, my respects to you as well. You can sit and we'll begin our meeting. Thank you. We have quite a full gallery this evening. We're also streaming live via our YouTube channel for people at home or watching later on as well. The conditions of entry, as a part of, you would have seen as you come through the door, the conditions of entries attending the council meeting need to behave in a courtesy and respectful manner before, during, and after the meeting. And at any time, if anyone isn't behaving in the way that they should, the chair, which is I, can ask you to remove, and this includes a councillor as well. So, we are all on our best behaviour. There's a little bit of emotion in the room tonight, but we will conduct our meeting in accordance with our local law and do that respectfully. Thank you very much. As we are recording the meeting, which goes out via our YouTube channel, speakers tonight, there are about ten speakers tonight at the lecturn. Your voices will be heard, but you won't be seen. The councillor group and the CEO sitting here are the only ones seen on camera, but if you are speaking, your voice will be recorded and broadcast live as well. Thank you very much for that. We'll do our apologies, which is the third item on our agenda. Apologies or any leave of absence. We have no apologies for tonight. We've all nine councillors here, all of our general management team and CEO here as well. Declarations of interest. This is a spot where any councillor can declare an interest that they have in the items on the agenda this evening. Councillors, does anyone have a declaration of interest? Councillor Middlemist?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have two items to declare. On item fourteen point three, the use and development of land for accommodate recreational vehicle stop in Yunnar. I'm advised that I have a connection, but no conflict under the Local Government Act. And to explain that further, the Secretary of the Yunnar and District Community Association, Mr Young, is a gentleman that I have worked with closely for thirty years, so he's very well known to me. But in a community of our size, these kind of things happen all the time. But I'm advised that that does not involve me in a conflict. On the next item on the agenda, item fourteen point four, the use of land for a place of assembly, the youth centre in Moor. I do have a conflict. Again, I've taken advice. It is under section seventy-eight B, the Local Government Act, in that I held a position or role in a body that will be financially impacted by the decision. Just if I make the declaration at this point in the meeting, I'm obliged to explain why. The youth space proposal was put forward by a consortium of social youth community organisations, the likes of Anglicare, Berry Street, the Scout Movement, etc. That consortium asked me for its foundation year or fifteen months to chair, as an independent chair of the consortium. And at those consortium meetings, there were direct discussions about the proposal that will be before council. So I will disqualify myself on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Middlemist. Any other councillors? Councillor Law?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Similar on fourteen point four. My business has tended on the joinery component. The office fit out for the youth space, so declare direct interest in that decision. And also, on ten point one, is a connection, but no interest in the fact that my eighty-eight-year-old mother signed a petition for a footpath which she'll never use.
You never know.
Thank you, Councillor Law. Just noting that there's a connection there. Any other councillors? No other councillors. I will declare as well, I have an indirect interest at fourteen four, which is the use of land for the assembly of a youth centre. My connection is a seventy-eight as well, an indirect interest in that I have been working with that youth space in my role as an artist in the last twelve months, and may continue to work with them into the future. So I will be excusing myself from the room at that point when we talk about that, and the Deputy Mayor, Councillor Macfarlane, will take the chair at that point. Anyone else, councillors, for this evening? Thank you very much. We move to item five, which is the adoption of the previous minutes which were held in February. Councillor Gibson?
Happy to move.
Happy to move, thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Howe, seconda. Any opposition? No. Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this? No? If there's no speakers, Councillor Howe, would you like to speak to this?
Okay.
Okay. There's no speakers and there's no opposition. We'll carry that one unanimously. Thank you very much, councillors. Acknowledgements. This is a point in the meeting where councillors have an opportunity to acknowledge the good work that's being done in our community, or people that have passed in the last month since we've last met. Councillors, are there any acknowledgements that we'd like to make?
Yeah.
Councillor White?
Mr Mayor, this is probably a little bit of a, well, I was going to say a bit of self-indulgence, but anyhow, last Saturday, we had the grand finals of West Gipstown Bowls Division pennant. And I just wanted to share with councillors and the gallery that in division one, there was a very close contest with Newborough, defeated Trelgyn hundred to ninety-five, and it was a great contest. Unfortunately, Moi went down in division two to Warwickel, eighty to a hundred. But in another cliffhanger in division three, it was Trelgyn RSL, ninety-seven, defeated Thorpedale, ninety-five, which was a fantastic contest between those two sides. Thorpedale had been on top all year. Trelgyn RSL won this game by one shot. And the previous week, they defeated another pretty rough-looking lot from Moorwell by one shot as well, which I hope to be part of, that's what I'm saying there. And division four, Trelgyn defeated Garfield, eighty-eight, sixty-three. Division five, at the Moor bowling club, this was a clash of the titans, Moor versus Moor Club, Bowling Club. And Moor Bowling Club was able to win that one, came home with a wet sail, to win seventy-eight to seventy-one. But my primary reason for getting up to mention this to you, Mr Mayor, is the fact that in division six, as a result of the efforts of this council, for the first time, Churchill won division six, forty-four shots to thirty-seven against Long Warrick. And so this was a very unique and historic occasion for the Churchill Bowls Club, which was played at the Trelgyn Bowls Club venue, which was all in good nick for the day. And it was again, a very close tussle, and Churchill came home with a wet sail in that one too, to take out their historic first win in bowls, in the West Gipstown Bowls Division. Well done.
Thank you, Councillor White. Councillor Gibson, an acknowledgement?
Thank you. Yes, I would. On Saturday, we had the first match ever at the new netball courts, Moi District Netball Association, but it was at the new courts in Newborough. So we had not just the first match, but the first tournaments. And Voyage Fitness ran that, and the tune of fifteen hundred dollars' worth of prize money. And they loved it. So acknowledgements to all about that.
Thank you very much. Any other councillors wish to make an acknowledgement at this stage? Thank you, councillors, very much. We move to item seven, which is public participation time. This is an opportunity where the community has to engage with the council, either via written questions or as speakers. We have a number of speakers tonight, but their first point of order is the public questions that have been submitted in writing. And I'll hand across to Mr Piersenti to respond to those.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We do have three questions on notice. The first two are from Lorraine Bull, President of Latrobe Valley Sustainability Group. I've seen Lorraine in the audience. So the topic is item nine point one, review of council's adopted position on climate change 2010. And the question is, what timeframe is expected for the review to take place? So in response, if the motion is passed by council, the review would take place over the coming months. This would include, at a minimum, presentation of a discussion paper for the council's consideration, and then a report would be presented to a future council meeting. At this point in time, I'm unable to specifically say the timeframe, as this will depend on the type of process the council agrees to undertake, particularly regarding community engagement if the motion is passed. And the second question from the same writer on the same topic is, what policy will be used until a new position is adopted? So if the motion is passed by council, it does not amend the current adopted policy position. Should the motion be passed, the position will remain in force, albeit not published on the website. And the third question is from Dr Jessica Reeves. I'm not sure if Jessica's in the audience. She isn't. The topic was actually the same as the last question. So we'll, given she's not in the audience, we'll put that in our minutes.
Thank you, Mr Piersenti. We now move to public speakers. I've been handed a list of public speakers on nine point one, fourteen point two, fourteen point three, and fourteen point four. And at fourteen point four, I will step out of the room to hear those submissions to that motion, and Councillor Macfarlane will take the chair. So we're moving in numerical order. Nine point one is the review of the council position from 2010. This has been submitted by Daniel Cafrey, and I don't think Daniel's in the audience. Is this correct? And I think, did we establish that?
No.
No, so I think the way that the council policy has been is that the person who submits must turn up and be the person. We've had proxies in the past before, and there's been some complications. So we adopted a new policy a couple of years ago. So I wanted to clarify that. So thanks very much, Lorraine, for understanding that. But we'll move on from Daniel's item of nine point one to fourteen point two. Shannon Davies is here in the audience. Good to see you, Shannon, talking on fourteen point two on Rockler Road, Trelgyn East. So the way this works, Shannon, is we have three minutes on the clock, and then just stay at the lecturn, and councillors might have any questions for you at the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, Mr Mayor, and also councillors, and also everyone in the room. My name's Shannon Davies. I'm the Director of SD Planning, and acting on behalf of the applicant of ACE Training, who is the proponent for this planning permit. Just to set some context, ACE Training has actually occupied nine Rockler Road, Trelgyn, since 2011. Since that time, they have actually provided a range of employment training opportunities for the local community, and their aims really are about increasing the skills of the Latrobe city's workforce. The proposal before you, we believe, will offer you many, many benefits. It will provide a flexible range of local education and training opportunities, which are tailored to the needs of the local community and also the local economy. It will support job creation and industry diversification, which we believe that is important for Latrobe City Council, and also for Latrobe City as a broader entity. The application will also support and contribute to economic growth. It uses local services. It keeps training locally. And also, we believe that this application should be commended to you. We do note that there have been objections to this application, and we understand that, and so does the owner of the property. We understand that the issues that have been raised include vibration of the activities that are occurring on the site, car parking, noise, and drainage. Now, I have to really state to you, councillors, that this site is in an industrial zone. This is a very busy industrial zone, and we acknowledge that. But the main use of an industrial zone is for non-sensitive activities. There are no residential uses within the local proximity, and that's really important for making the decisions that are before you. The industrial zone caters for a range of industrial uses, including large manufacturing businesses, which generate intensive truck movements and intensive activities on the actual sites. So I don't want to shy away from that, and I think it's really important for me to stand here on behalf of the proponent to make you aware of that. We really do commend the planning officer's recommendation of support for the amendment to the planning permit. And we believe that they have considered all of the issues adequately, and done what we have to do in planning, which is to balance the needs of the existing community, the emerging community, environment, economy, and all of the things we have to balance. So really, I just commend this application to you, and ask you to support this local business and its future operations.
Thank you, Shannon. I think we might have some questions for you. Councillors, do we have any questions? No? I saw people writing with pens, so I thought there might have been some questions. But no, that's good.
It's all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. On the same subject, we have Ray Just speaking to us on the same planning matter, fourteen point two. Ray, so three minutes, and then councillors may have questions for you at the end.
Okay. My name is Ray Just, and I'm the Director of Optum Drafting. We lease Suite Six in twenty slash twenty-two Stratton Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Due to only having three minutes to address council, I've sent out a PDF of my submission via Councillor Howe, who hopefully is forwarded to all councillors. I'm asking each of you to consider the submission in full before you vote on the resolution. This submission contains details about the following. The current WorkSafe improvement notice, which states, quote, "The failure to control the risk of mobile plant colliding with adjoining workplace building or structure could result in serious injury," excuse me, "from potential structural collapse to employees or other persons in neighbouring property," end quote. The insurance claim currently underway for water damage. It questions the safeguards, or lack of, for non-compliance if the resolution is passed. It questions the proposed timeframes on the ground of safety to my workers. It questions the car parking issue, which everybody says is okay, but from the photos and the applicant's actions indicates otherwise. It suggests that an additional clause should be added to the resolution. It questions the honesty of the applicant in relation to their statement to council, quote, "We are continuing our discussions with objectors as a matter of urgency, and will inform you of any progress or specific areas of agreement reached," end quote. Should any clarification be sought from the applicant with regard to the submission by me, I request a right reply to their response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Did well. Any questions, councillors, of Mr Just?
Sure, okay. Any questions of Mr Just before we leave him of the lecturn? Nope.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ray. But I will note that, Councillor Gibson, we have a question of the officers. And before we leave fourteen point two, Mr Cafrey has just entered the building. Hello.
Hello.
Mr Cafrey, how are you? We were trying to go in numerical order, and nine point one was the first item. So we'll just slot you in in a second before we move to things. So grab a seat, and we'll have you come and present to us. We move to fourteen point three, which is the use and development of land for an RV stop in Main Street, Yunnar. Mr Kevin Young. Kevin, you're here. Glad to see you. So you've seen how this works.
This item up for your consideration tonight has been an agenda item for my association, the Yonar and District Community Association. It's been on our agenda for two years. And what's helped prompt it is the closure of Hazelwood Power Station, and also the closure of the caravan park at the Pondige. With the closure of the power station, we've noticed a decline in trade in town. In the mornings, our general store would do coffees and buns and stuff for some of the workers, and our cafe also was doing the same trade. Since the Pondige, the power stations closed down, they've noticed a reduction in their trade, and also a reduction in their operating times. In getting this issue to council, I've worked very closely with the council planning department, and I've also consulted with some of the residents, or the residents who will be affected by this proposal, and we've come to a mutual agreement on the arrangement and layout of the site. Just as a bit of a definition, it's been termed as a free camp. Now, free brings up the connotation of no cost, but what it actually is, is a free camp is reliant on the caravan as being, not reliant on external sources such as power and water. Therefore, a block of land like we have in Yonar is quite suitable for caravans to pull up on, spend a bit of time in town, and not be reliant on any services within our town. The RV free camping movement is a growth industry in Australia, which has been noticed in many publications, and I would like Yonar to take advantage of that. And one of the reasons is I want to bring some money into our town to boost up our economy. I've seen too many towns around Australia, small towns like Yonar, that have died because the industries have left them, and I don't want that to happen to our town. I also would like to bring more visitors to the area so they can have a look around. And by offering the free camp in Yonar, we're offering them an alternative away from the mainstream caravan parks, which they may not stay at anyway. At the present point in time, if we can get this up and running in Yonar, it will be the first, not only will it be the first free camp within Latrobe City, it will be the first free camp this side of Melbourne before the caravaners reach Rosedale. And at the present point in time, they're just driving past this in droves. And so I figure if we can offer something in Yonar, attract them off the street, and get them to have a look around the area. I suppose in closing, I'd just like to state that the signs on the entrance to Yonar state that Yonar is a vibrant community. I would like to see it kept that way, and I think by getting a free camp within town, we should maintain that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Young. Councillors, do we have any questions? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, just to be clear, I think for the sake of the council meeting, this is, this particular proposition is being proposed under the auspices of the Yonar District Community Association.
That is correct.
And they will take responsibility for the day-to-day management.
That is correct, yes.
As in that regard. And in terms of, and I think that, as I recall, it's a maximum of two days' stay.
At the present point in time, yes.
According to the suggestion in the documentation. And of course, the other one that I just want to be clear on is that there's been much discussion between the YDCA and the surrounding community to try and come up with a proposal that will be amenable to all, is that right?
That is correct, yes. I think we've achieved that. I spent a lot of time talking to the one resident who was mainly affected, and we've scaled it back from what it initially was to what it is now. And he's, the last I spoke to him, he was happy with that.
Councillor Gibson, question?
Thank you for your presentation, Kevin. Two questions, please. One, have you read the recommendation?
No.
Nope, all right.
I have spoken with the planner.
Yep.
And we've verbally gone over it, but I have not had a copy of it presented to me.
Oh, okay.
I sat with him, and we went through it, and I was in agreement with everything that he had in the thing.
Because there's a notice to grant a permit in here with the different points that you need to adhere to.
Yes.
And in that, there's one, I just wanted to know how you do it, because it's saying, as you said, that the RVs are only permitted to stay there for 48 hours.
Yes.
How would you police that, though, please?
As like, as people come in, it's proposed that they will be in contact with one of the committee of management. Committee of management will be formed once we get the approval to go ahead. There'll be numbers listed on the signboard as they come in, so somebody on that board will be notified. And then it'll be up to us to go around and check them out, and if they overstay, they'll be advised that they're in breach of our permit. And that's the best I can do with that.
No worries, thank you.
No worries.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Young? No, Kevin, you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On 9.1, Daniel Caffrey, Mr. Caffrey, you've in the room now, so we'll hear from you. So the way it works, Dan, is it was three minutes, there's a clock on that monitor over there on the wall, and it counts down, and then you'll hear the bell, and that's the end of your three minutes in the state lectern, and there might be some questions.
Right.
All right.
Yeah. Good evening. Having read the 2010 Latrobe City Council position on climate change as part of the council's environment statement, I was wondering why it should be pulled from the website? Although written in 2010, the statement is still fit for purpose today, even though the urgency with which it attempted to address the issues of human-made climate change is greater today than it was 10 years ago. As there was only 390 parts per million CO2 in the atmosphere then, 417 parts per million now. A new climate change policy, I'd hope, would actually speak more on transition to a coal-free future with an end date that is in line with international expectations of keeping the warming below 1.5 degrees C. I'd like the councillors to keep in mind that especially since the bushfires, the community expectation is that no new coal developments would be encouraged, and that renewable energy with various storage options and grid upgrades would be front of mind, as would facilitating a just transition for coal workers in the region. It may be obvious, but it should be noted that Latrobe City will feel the cost of transition more than any other municipality in Victoria. Brown coal electricity generation produces almost 40% of Victoria's greenhouse gas emissions. That's about 43 megatons per year out of almost 110 megaton. It should also be noted that lignite, our brown coal, is the most greenhouse gas emissions-intensive of all fuels, producing over 1.1 tonnes of CO2 for every megawatt hour of electricity. Contrast that with wind, which is 0.02 tonnes, which is virtually nothing, even when embodied energy and construction energy is built into it. A new environment policy would also recognise the value of leaving the land intact, not having to worry about the cost and the danger presented by ever-increasing voids where the coal was extracted from. I'd hope that a revised environment policy would factor these considerations in and prevent the likelihood of this region becoming a rust belt if the coal facilities become stranded assets. So my question to councillors is why should the present statement be taken down when it's still such a strong statement of intent to do the right thing by the environment? And will an upgraded, updated statement be a stronger statement of transition to 100% greenhouse gas-free energy production than the present one? Also, when are we likely to see a new environment policy? I'd be interested. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Dan. So just to be clear with the presentations that we have at council, we won't be answering those questions here to you directly, but hopefully through debate and through the policy changes and review that we may do, that those answers will come through, but we won't be able to give you a direct answer now. Are there any questions, Mr. Caffrey? Then you're excused. Thanks very much. Councillors, we are moving to 14.4 through our public address to council. I'm going to vacate the chair and let councillor McFarlane chair this part of the meeting.
Thank you, councillors. Our first speaker in relation to this item is Mr. Ray Massaro. Ray, I think you understand the pack drill, three minutes remain for questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Ray Massaro, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and a proponent for the youth space, propose the 497 or part of 497 Prince's Drive and Mall as a place of assembly for our mall in Latrobe Valley, Gippsland Youth, in particular Latrobe as our council-city boundaries close by. I have a lease on the premises and planning refurbishment and so forth in place or in the process. The lease is to the Honourable Robin Scott MP, his Assistant Treasurer. This proposal is to use the building for the youth space of Latrobe, and is government-funded, and has been a programme that's been ongoing for quite some time, as our previous two councillors that aren't in the room have said. It is fully staffed and ready to go. It's shovel-ready and has been for a little while. We don't need planning delays. The attached youth space is for the youth of Latrobe. Youth, you know, 25 and under, down to whatever age group will attend the functions, and it's a learning and teaching facility. It's a two-storey building, glassed on three sides, visible externally from the highway, the service road, the side street, and visible from outside, visible from inside out as well. It's an open space, clearly, and it's a showpiece for them to be operating in as a learning place. The site was selected and chosen by DHS, Department of Health and Human Services, because of its high visibility and location and proximity to areas that the youth of Latrobe will use. It's a high-visible corner site, lit up 24/7 at night by the next door and the Italian Club next door as well. It has 24-hour security cameras on the premises either side of them, and they also have security cameras within it. The cameras are there from the previous business. It has excellent access to public transport. It's 30 metres from the bus stop. It has an inter-town and inter-railway connector through Mid Valley, which is only less than 500 metres away. It's serviced, that area is serviced by three sets of traffic lights to get people across to that facility. It's on a service road. It has access to public transport and very easy access. It's opposite Mid Valley Shopping Centre. Mid Valley Shopping Centre has a picture theatre, it has a medical centre, it has retail stores, it has food courts, it has restaurants, all of the things that the young generation will need. Whoops. Can I just go a little bit longer, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Councillor O'Callaghan?
May I make an extension of speaking time to Mr. Massaro, please?
Thank you, Councillor O'Callaghan. Second, councillor Harriman. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against carried, you have three more minutes only.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. And it also has licensed premises and food courts and restaurants that are licensed as well. It also has a, the facility is currently located in Mid Valley alongside those licensed facilities, including a bottle shop and so forth. It's neighbouring to a well-organised Italian club, which is managed and controlled by families, managed and controlled by me and you. It was set up that way, still is today. It has sporting activities within it, bocce, fishing, bowling, bocce. In fact, some of the youth of the organisation represent Australia. They started as very young youth, for that matter, within it. Fishing club, billiard club, dark club, et cetera, et cetera. The facility is serviced by a bar that services three areas, the restaurant, the gaming area, and members lounge. You cannot get into the place without signing as you come in through a front door. You have to sign as a non-member, and then you have to be signed off by a member. So, and the bar's areas serves as three totally different areas as well, so it's totally controlled within the movement of people within that area. Their controls are quite good and quite strong. It's neighbouring to a family business, Massaro Motors, has been there for some time. We don't have 45 employees now, but we do have eight or nine, and car parking's not a problem. It's close proximity to Kurnai College, 500 metres to an education centre, and those students do use that bus stop just out the front of this facility. It's close to Central Gippsland at TAFE, 500 metres to the new TAFE College and secondary education facility there. It's within walking distance to residential areas and sporting facilities that these young people will use and can walk to, either drive by car or push their bikes. It's a high-visibility standalone facility to promote the facility, to encourage the youth of Latrobe to utilise that space. It can be seen, it's there like a pimple on a pumpkin, and stands out like a beacon and well lit up. I hope that your deliberation is positiveness, and I thank you for the time and extension of time. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Massaro. Any questions to Mr. Massaro? Councillor Harriman?
Sorry, Ray, I've got a couple to throw at you. You mentioned you used to have 45 staff. How did you park 45 staff? And I take it you had some customers there as well? How did you fit them in on the site?
We fitted them in on the site, but when it got difficult, we actually contributed to the car park out in front of the Italian Club, which is a public car park, third by us and two-thirds by the Italian Club, and I think council made it happen quite a few years ago. Also, we had an agreement with management that our staff and their staff would park at the back at the bocce court car park, which is empty all day, very rarely used during the day, and then the overflow of cars, in fact, all our staff and their staff were parking at the back. We made it a company rule and a staff rule, parking behind the bocce courts, which is not used during the day five days a week.
You also mentioned, if I heard correctly, that a couple of the bocce champions actually started at the Italian Club as kids. So you're saying, so I guess my question is, you're saying there's already youth, and you mentioned other clubs already frequenting the Italian Club already?
Absolutely. Yes, now, the youth, the youth that are in fact representing Australia, some of them were members of the Italian Club's family, some weren't, but they were introduced to it, and now, and in fact, one of the ones was definitely not a member of the Italian Club, but become a very valuable player, as well as their other sporting involvements with the Gippsland Falcons. When the Gippsland Falcons were in the National League, they were virtually brother organisations that fed one another and assisted. So they're very strong in sport.
And, sorry, I'm going to keep you a little bit, Ray, sorry. You mentioned that there was other activities for youth in the area. Would you name a couple?
Well, I mean, activities for youth is wide and varied. You take the Tenpin Bowling Alley, for example, and Spin City, that's within 500 metres. The educators that I mentioned before. Young people do need recreation, better recreation than they get at the picture theatre or socially at the food court, a cup of coffee or whatever, right next door. You have football, soccer, tennis, netball, not far, just over the creek, water creek, those venues that are just there within a short walk. So lots of sports are represented just within a walking distance of that place. They don't have to catch a bus to go to them. And the trainers, if they do, can use those facilities, and they can all walk there.
Yep, that's right. My last question, sorry, Ray. I think you mentioned in there that the current youth centre is over at Mid Valley, is that right?
Yes, the current youth centre is located at Mid Valley and in an environment where you've talked about alcohol before, and one of the objectives is the Italian Club. It's there now, right next door to an uncontrolled liquor outlet, plus the licensed restaurants that surround it as well, so the young people are exposed to that in that environment, whereas where they're going to go, can't hide, three glasses, two stories, and a controlled environment where you must sign in and be accompanied or signed in.
No worries, thanks, Ray. I'll leave you. No, thanks Ray, I'll leave you in peace now, sorry for all of that.
Thank you councillor Harriman, any other councillor with a question? If not, thank you, Mr Massaro.
Thank you, councillors.
I don't believe Josephine Calaver is here, so we'll move on to Ange Coy, Executive Manager of Youth Services, YMCA Victoria, thanks Ange.
Good evening Deputy Mayor and councillors, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak today in support of the planning application currently before council. My name is Ange Coy, I'm speaking in my capacity as the Executive Manager for Youth Services at YMCA Victoria, which is the lead agency and contract partner for the Latrobe Youth Space project. The YMCA has operated for over one hundred and seventy-five years in more than one hundred and twenty countries around the world and for one clear purpose, we believe in the power of inspired young people. We've seen the impact that inspired young people can have in this community, the initial targets for the Latrobe Youth Space have been blown out of the water already and we're not even in the proposed space yet. As with any new undertaking, we would of course expect for there to be questions or concerns about how it might fit into or affect or benefit the community before a final decision is made by council. Therefore, it's imperative for us to clarify some of the details around the services and offerings so that you can all be fully informed before making that decision. To that end, I would like to clarify the intent, the focus and the safeguards that are in place as well as the operating hours for the centre. First of all, it's really important to note that the Latrobe Youth Space is not a welfare service for young people. The focus is on vocational skills, life skills, recreation, social connection, strengthening employment pathways and providing a sense of belonging and personal identity. Welfare services or work aimed directly at high-risk young people has never been a focus of the Latrobe Youth Space and there is no intent for it to become so. Concerning the number of staff at the centre, this has, as always, will be dependent on the numbers of young people attending at any given time. In accordance with YMCA ratio requirements, this standard at Latrobe Youth Space is actually higher than the legislated requirements. Regarding the hours of operation, these have been presented as being from ten AM to nine PM seven days a week, however, this is actually incorrect. The centre is only operational six days a week, most days finishing by six PM and if it were to open on a Sunday, it would purely be for a few hours during the daytime for a special event. There's also been an assumption that services on offer may include family mediation, drug and alcohol abuse support, mental health support, legal advice, health services, employment assistance, none of these services are currently offered in that space nor do they intend to be so. This would actually be outside the scope of our contract for this project. Young people needing those services are referred to the appropriate agencies such as YSAS and Headspace, things like employment assistance are limited to upskilling young people with interview skills or resume writing alone. Finally, regarding the question of whether the proposal meets the strategies and objectives contained within clause nineteen point oh-two-one S Health Facilities, i.e. the location being incompatible with an existing licensed gaming venue adjacent to the site. This has of course been considered and I would ask humbly for an extension of time.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Harriman?
Thank you so much.
All in favour?
Thank you. This has of course been considered and assessed for risk level and we do not see this as an uncontrollable risk to either the club next door or the young people accessing the youth space. The YMCA was chosen as the lead agency on this project for a number of reasons, a key one being our scale, our capacity and our approach to risk mitigation in working with young people. We are proud to be one of the first organisations in Australia to be accredited as a child-safe organisation. We have the backing and expertise of industry-leading risk and safety teams that ensure that any activities undertaken at any of more than a hundred sites that we operate across the state adhere to strict risk assessment and management processes. The interim youth space is currently located at Mid Valley Shopping Centre where there is a licensed cinema, a restaurant, a liquor shop. Throughout nearly eighteen months of operating, there has not been one single related incident. In fact, the security at the centre have reported that they've actually seen an improvement since the arrival of the youth space. We see a clear and repeated precedent across the community of other youth services or community services being located in close proximity to licensed or gaming venues without posing a new or increased risk to either the young people or the venues concerned. Kernie College is across the road from an IGA with a liquor store, Berry Street has got an RSL across the road, Anglercare has Manny's Liquor at the market metres away and the Latrobe City Council itself, which has a youth council in operation, is across the road from two licensed restaurants. If any licensed venue concerned is adhering to their alcohol and gaming restrictions regarding under eighteen's and the youth space is adhering to the safeguarding children and young people policies which inform every activity that the YMCA undertakes, the risk is minimal at worst and nonexistent at best. We have clearly demonstrated this lack of risk during our tenancy at Mid Valley for the last year and a half. If the permit is not granted and the youth space needs to identify a new site, it is unlikely that this would be achieved without continuously testing those concerns related to a licensed gaming venue. Our preference would be to foster a close working relationship between the youth space and the Italian Club next door that mitigates those risks and promotes fantastic opportunities for young people in the region. In closing, I want to be clear that any service involving working with people, not just young people but people, will bring with it a certain level of risk. The YMCA has an unusually low appetite for risk, even more so when there's young people involved. We are confident that the proposed location of the new youth space has gone through all due diligence at local operation, lead agency and state government level and therefore does not present risk to the young people involved, local business or the community at large. Thank you for your time and consideration, I look forward to a positive result from you all on this matter.
Thanks Ange, councillors, any questions, councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, Ange, can I just ask, in relation to the consultation that was undertaken in the development of the youth centre proposal with young people in the community, were those consultations actually held at the Italian Australian Club?
It's a fabulous question, thank you, and yes, a number of those consultations were actually held at that club, yes.
Thanks very much.
Further questions councillors, councillor Harriman?
If I can, Mr Deputy Mayor, sorry Ange, you've got over a hundred venues?
A hundred different sites, I suppose, depending on time of year.
Yeah, depending, any other within, within an area around a licensed venue?
Yes.
Any dramas at any of those?
Never.
Now, there's a couple of rumours going around about what's going to be happening at the site, you nailed one, you said no drug and alcohol counselling on site?
Correct.
Any sleepovers on site?
Not at all, we have also heard that concern that there may be an understanding in the community that the space was zoned for residential use or overnight sleeping or any, absolutely not, not sure where that information came from but it's not correct, it's never been the intent of the space and certainly will never become the intent of the space for it to be an overnight facility, thank you for your question there.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Councillors, any further questions? Sorry councillor Gibson, I did say you first.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, you were speaking about a need to work with the Italian Club if the permit was granted.
Yep.
Have you not actually started any conversations previously?
It would probably be remiss for me to speak to that as I've not been directly involved in those conversations, but I believe that there have been conversations up to this point.
Okay, would you know who would be the right person to ask that question?
Hello?
You're standing?
No, just a question, in relation to that, I believe that in terms of this, in Ange's role, they're not actually the Department of Health and Human Services?
Point of clarification there councillor.
Well, they're the people that would be having the conversations, these guys aren't the brothers having it.
Did I just ask if she knew?
Councillor Gibson, done, thank you. No further questions, thank you Ange. Oh, sorry councillor White, I should have written her down, councillor White.
Dr Redress, no. So I guess my question through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, to Ange is, in terms of the, how you expect to be able to attract the numbers that will be associated with this space and going forward and would there be a maximum number that you can support?
Yeah, obviously numbers coming in and out of the space would be within the requirements of actual legislated zoning for how many people can fit in a building. As far as attracting young people to the space, I mentioned early on that we've been absolutely blowing the targets out of the water up until this point, so there were a number of set targets laid out as part of our contract of how many young people we would want to engage with and we were concerned that when we're at the Mid Valley space, given that that wasn't hugely visible and that wasn't a built-for-purpose space, that that might have some negative impact on our targets. What we've seen is that the activities and the work that the staff team and the volunteers there are doing are drawing young people in in droves, our expectation is that that number would increase even further, being in a more visible location that's really accessible by transport, is really close to the school. We also intend to keep the lease at Mid Valley for a certain amount of time so that we can use that as a satellite site so that if young people are coming through the shopping centre and are used to going to that youth space, we can direct them as to where the new space is, so we'll still be able to capture that foot traffic of young people through the shopping centre.
Supplementary question councillor Harriman?
Sorry Ange, just one that came up with that, how at need in your opinion is a youth service?
I beg your pardon?
How at need, how much do we need in this community, the service, you're saying the numbers are beating expectations?
Yeah.
How much does this community need it in your opinion?
In my opinion, it's absolutely crucial, the impact that we're seeing on young people that are coming in to use the space, I always look at it from the perspective of what would happen if that wasn't there. So we know that we're having impact on thousands of young people coming through the space who are not getting the kind of service that we're offering there from any of the other services or agencies within the region. So as stated, we're not about welfare, we're about social connection, we're about upskilling, we're about providing recreation vocational skills, the young people don't currently have one point of reference or one place to go to where they can find all of those things. So I think it would be a huge deficit to the community if we weren't able to continue with that service, thank you.
Councillor White, you have a further question?
Yeah, just trying to keep up with councillor Harriman. Yeah, my question really is, I suppose in terms of where the, your target group might come from, is it particularly or specifically on three-eight-four-oh, that is Moorwall, or could the youth be coming in from Churchill or Drogan or Oi et cetera to be able to experience that space?
Yeah, absolutely, it's the latter out of that question, it's definitely aimed at being a broader catchment area for young people and to that end, not only are we relying on public transport that's in place already but the youth space itself has mini-buses, vans and vehicles that are in use to be able to transport young people to and from the venue safely, so if they are coming from outlying areas and there may not be public transport at the particular time that they need it, it's actually part of our planning and part of our contract that we provide that additional transport service for young people so that it's safe.
Thank you Ange, no further questions, thank you very much Ange.
Thanks so much.
Now looking for Sharon Noonan? Thanks Sharon.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight, I'm also here to talk about Latrobe Youth Space, I have had the pleasure of being mentoring and supporting youth through this process. I have lived here in Moorwall for fifty-three years and I've been a youth worker here for over fifteen, speak to a lot of teenagers around what they wanted here in Moor and one of the things that came out of that was desperately in need of connections. We had sporting facilities, scouting facilities but not a lot of space where they can go if they didn't fit into that and this is where the Latrobe Youth Space has come in. I've been very happy to go along this journey with them and I've been from the beginning, so I was one of the mentors driving the youth members around to check out sites. They had a very strict criteria that they came up with, they didn't want it to be seen as a welfare space so they tried to stay away from some of those parts down here in the CBD. They looked at accessibility for the high school, that they acknowledged that the young people around, particularly in Moorwall, don't have a lot of personal transport, so it was really up to them to get to where they needed to be. They looked at lots of options, we saw some very interesting buildings here in Moor and we spent a lot of time actually at the Italian Club, having meetings down there looking at what we could be doing. And then the next door came up, we had a look at it, the openness of it, the clear space around it so there can be transparency with what's happening with inside the building and what is happening outside the building, offering spaces that are not only inside but outside for our young, young parent programmes, for our youth-led programmes, for even our social enterprise programmes that we would like to have. From the scout point of view, we interviewed many, many of our teenagers, so the ages from twelve right through to seventeen, they identified we needed this space. They looked at what their options would come up with, we decided that would put forward the things that were required. One of those was close to transport, close to the high school, close to activities being the bowling alley, being the movie theatre, KFC, not necessarily good, but transport, 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 what they could get to. Bus stop at the front, bus stop round the corner at the post office, well lit up, next door the Italian Club, they saw it as a positive, not a negative. For them, it was about what the Italian Club could offer, the bocce courts. My apologies, may I talk a bit longer please?
Councillor Harriman, councillor Gibson?
Thank you.
All those in favour? All those in favour? Against carried?
Thank you, they saw the Italian Club as a positive, not a negative. The scouts ourselves, we use the Italian Club quite a lot, we'll have meetings down there, we are encouraging, it's a family venue, they see that as a family venue and something that is a positive, not a negative. We looked at a lot of places across Moorwall, particularly down in CBD, they looked at places that were near other welfare agencies. They looked at it as a stigma they did not want attached to Latrobe Youth Space. Our youth here are sick of being pigeonholed to be having to go to a welfare space for assistance. The Latrobe Youth Space is all about preventative, what can we do to support our youth before they need Headspace, before they need counselling? This is what this is for and it needs to be a very open space for all inclusiveness and this is what they're trying to design. So hopefully, this building will be the ideal space for them and we can work alongside the Italian Club, thank you.
Thank you Sharon, any questions, councillor Harriman?
Can't let Sharon get away without answering a couple of questions, grilled everybody else, it's only fair we share it round. Sharon, you mentioned that it was actually the youth that picked this site out?
Yes.
When we're talking the youth, can you explain the group and their views on why this site was the chosen site? You said they saw a lot of others as unacceptable, what made this the site they thought was the best site?
Sure, so part of the design team, we had a lot of youth members sitting around what they would require, what would they need? Light, airiness, safe, outside spaces, they thought about everything, parking, transport, facilities with inside so they could actually do some life skills, kitchens, bathrooms, all that sort of stuff, they identified all those things. For them, it was really about how can we be close enough to where the youth are? For them, it was high school to start with, okay, so high school finishes up, where do the kids go? Well great, they can just walk up the road and they can be there. We looked at some spaces here downtown, we looked at something above not quite right, very dark, no natural light, not good for your health, late at night, so we're looking after five o'clock in the afternoon, there is nothing down here for them, there's nowhere they can go to, there's nowhere we can walk someone to do an activity. That was a lot of their things, we looked at a few shops down here, again they'd walk in the door and go, no, we can't run our activities from here. The building itself is a space that locks them down to this is where we can work from, but the Latrobe Youth Space does a lot of outreach, so they've got their own vehicles, they do a lot of transport, they go out and... So they've got their own vehicles, they do a lot of transport, they go out and about. One of the best things they're doing is we're working with Latrobe Valley Bus Lines. We've got youth workers on the bus lines, showing now that it's a much safer place for teenagers to travel. And it's reduced down the incidences we've had on the bus lines here in the valley. So it's all those things that are working together. And that site next to the Italian Club is the most visual, welcoming site that there can be.
Thank you, Sharon. No further questions? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
I'll now call Catherine Webb. Welcome, Catherine, you know the fact drill.
What was that on?
Three minutes?
Ah, yeah, perfect, no worries. Yeah, my name's Catherine, I've lived locally for five years, coming up to six in April. I've worked, volunteered, studied and developed my career in the valley. I'm a youth mentor and I have rich connections and friendships with young people all over the community. Three years ago, as Sharon sort of touched on, I had the honour of being a part of the co-design team that actually helped to select the space and also to inform the guiding principles of the space, which has led to where it is today. As mentioned, we got to observe multiple buildings, the process was very transparent, where we even, we were shown maps of like what was actually available in Moorwall. And we were also asked to go out and like scope locations, do walkthrough videos, they're a little embarrassing, but they were what they were. And everything was pretty much considered through that. After inspecting the available sites, there was unanimous agreement that the current site next door to the Italian Australian Club was ideal. It's a really versatile space to work with, which means that young people can really make it their own, which is really important for the space to be sustainable, that young people feel they have ownership and can actually have the input that they want there. It's near to public transport, close to prominent youth hangout spots as mentioned, Kernie College. And yeah, also the fact that the Italian Australian Club is a current function site and has function rooms was considered. And as mentioned, a bunch of our meetings were actually held there with no incidents. As a local young person, I've really observed a lot of the challenges that young people face. You know, the lack of the accessible positive and fun sort of programmes and also the fear of stigmatisation that comes with taking up referrals to those problem-based spaces. There really is a need for something like Latrobe Youth Space to be able to create that sort of hinge that young people can then be referred on, but also just a fun space to hang out and to connect socially, to prevent social isolation and to help engage people better in long-term work or study. So like having watched my friends and young people sort of struggling with these issues over my six years in our community, I really want to see the space able to continue to grow. And I don't want it to have to happen, you know, six, 12, 18, 24 months or even potentially not at all in the future. I really want to see it happen now. I think that this space has a lot to offer and is currently offering a lot to young people. And I really hope that you'll consider young people's voices in your decision tonight, myself included and the co-design team. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Catherine, just stand there for a minute, just in case there is any questions. Councillor Harriman?
Sorry, Catherine, you're going to cop it on, everyone's going to cop it tonight, sorry. You mentioned you were involved in the selection of the site?
Yeah.
That you're now a youth mentor. What effect do you think it would have on the youth in the area, particularly those using this service, if council was to reject this site?
Yeah, look, I think a lot of people, it's interesting because a lot of the people who were initially part of the co-design process, like they aren't necessarily, like they've been to the space, but they aren't necessarily like heavily involved still. But they still talk about the space and they refer their friends and they have a lot of hope in the space. And they're always like, I'll run into people on the bus and they'll be like, oh, what's happening with it? I could see that it would be pretty, it'd be pretty just like soul destroying to not have the sort of the views and the voices actually recognised and considered. And it would be, it would lend to the frustration that young people are already feeling in terms of not feeling listened to and sort of not feeling like there is that space for them currently. At the moment, we're sort of shoehorned into Mid Valley, it's not a space just for young people. Yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you, councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Catherine, I suppose my question is in relation to the kinds of activities and programmes that we offer in this space. And also, I suppose, whilst we heard earlier, it's really targeted at those who are not involved in sporting organisations and other sorts of group activities, that this is really primarily there to sort of provide an opportunity for these. Those who are not involved in those capacities to be able to come together and have a beneficial experience at that location. So I guess I'm really wondering the kinds of programmes that you anticipate might be happening out of this space. And I suppose as time goes on, you see obviously a continuing demand for this sort of space going forward.
Yeah, it's interesting you mention that. At the current space, Zumba operates on a Monday night, talking of sport and recreation, and it's really logistically challenging to try to fit everybody in and dance in the space. There's a lot of times where we can't sort of do the dance moves because we're a bit squished up. And then I suppose there's also like, obviously all the current programmes and a couple of others that might not be able to happen in the current space include things like gardening and gardening programmes, like we don't currently have the ability to like do those with the space that we have. And there's been a number of others that have been flagged as well, including different theatre programmes and stuff like that. But yeah, like you mentioned, there's also outreach to lots of other community facilities and existing programs, sporting and otherwise that can happen through this space, particularly being so close to the Italian Australian Club and different sporting venues, yeah.
Thank you, Catherine. Any further questions? If not, thanks Catherine.
Cheers, thank you.
And I'd now call on Lincoln Ingravalli, Chair of Youth Safety Governance Committee and the Latrobe City Young Citizen of the Year. Welcome, Lincoln.
Thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor. Good evening, councillors, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm the Chair of Latrobe Youth Space Governance Committee and I'm speaking on behalf of the entire organisation tonight. And I'm here to speak about the great importance of item 14.4 and that this permit should be approved by council. Now, three years ago, as we've heard, a group of passionate and local young people came together and chose this site from so many others. Three years ago, this was supposed to be 12 months' time. It's been three years. The issues of three years ago should have been addressed, but they're still going because we haven't been able to get this site where it should be. And now we're here at council, we're ready to go and all we need is one last tick of approval to start making even bigger impact in the valley. Now, is it the best location on earth? Is there nothing else better out there? Look, there probably is, we can't, there could be something better. Purpose-built, if you guys have a spare 10 million, we can build some, that'd be great. But at the end of the day, for what we got in Moorwall, this is ideal, this is what the best and we're going to really work hard to make it the best place it can be. You know, and there's millions of dollars has already been pledged and millions more of state government money could come to the space and make sure it's long and viable. But another setback could say that it's not then Latrobe Youth Space, but Bendigo Youth Space or Sale Youth Hub or Shepherd and Youth Precinct. This is investment in our valley and to knock it back again, we could risk the future of a youth service like this, never before seen in our area in Australia, knocked back and we just, we can't have, we can't afford it. And as I touched on, youth-led, this organisation is governed by young people with adult guidance. We make decisions around funding for programs, we sit down, we are given a budget, we say, well, hang on, should we be spending this much? It's young people involved to the core. We are in there every day, volunteering, engaging, working. The staff are made up of people from a variety of age groups, including a lot of young people. And this is the first, second or maybe their first professional job. So it's, as I said, massive employer as well. Now, our municipality needs Latrobe Youth Space now more than ever. Our service is about inspiring, engaging and exciting people. We're not there for welfare or about giving people dreams and ideas. You know, our Rainbow Club, it becomes a safe, inclusive space for people to come in and engage. Young Parents Group, you know, people that would otherwise be at home alone, facing a hard time in their life, can come together and go through it as a group and experience, you know, similar things and it's less challenging. A life skills program, you know, it's creating, giving people skills and upskilling them so they can go get a job. They can get excited, they can have a future, it's not just about, you know, sitting at home and worrying about what's to come. Now, I know a major concern is about gambling and alcohol next door. If I'm a young person, if I'm gambling, it's on this, it's not at the pokies, okay? The, may I have an extension, please?
Councillor O'Callaghan, same councillor Harriman? All those in favour? All those in favour? Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I said, if I'm gambling, it's on my phone. I can sit at bed at midnight and bet on horses, trots, everything from all around the world. I don't need to go to the pokies, okay? I don't need to sit next to Nan and Pop at lunchtime to put a couple of... And that's, at the end of the day, that's the truth. You know, we don't want to go sit in a venue and do it, which is a whole nother issue on its own. And with regards to alcohol, if, half the time when young people are drinking, you know, over 18s of course, when they are drinking, it's not in a venue, half the time it's in someone's shed, you know, mum and dad are inside and it's a social thing. And it's because it's a lot cheaper to buy a six-pack at Dear Murphy's than it is to go have six beers. And that's the truth. Just to highlight that fact that we're not about encouraging people to go into this family venue to consume and gamble. It's if we are, we're engaging in a positive manner and we're creating a link there to be able to use their space and use our space to create, you know, a beacon for the valley and youth services and young people. Now, council in particular is, I believe, at the forefront of, you know, giving people services. The GRAC, the Performing Arts, Troggen Sports Complex, the Newborough and Moi, the cricket complex over there, Nepal Courts here. Things are happening for young people, it's never been more exciting time to live here. And this youth space can be the missing link in what young people need in the valley right now. A service that we haven't seen. And that's why I wholeheartedly believe council should approve this permit. Everything on paper and hearts and minds of young people says it's a good idea, so thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln. Questions to Lincoln? Councillor Gibson?
Hi, sorry. Hi, Lincoln, you said about three years you tried to do and it didn't happen. Can you tell me a bit more about that, please?
Yeah, of course. Basically, you know, through government process and those sorts of... So three years ago, the co-design team came up and selected the sites and those sorts of things. And then it's been just, our team, the staff started up without an office, with mobile phones and created this organisation. And we've been ready to go into the space, particularly Latrobe Youth Space, YMCA and our other community organisations have been ready to move in. It's been the rigmarole of, you know, departmental processes and those sorts of things to get to this point. Architects, I've got an architect now who's committed to the cause and as you see in the item, he's led it and those sorts of things in there. So it's just been getting to that point and the sort of other government, state governmental holdup. But now we're ready to go and we've got that out of the way and we just need this tick of approval.
Thank you. Councillor Harriman?
I've got to ask questions. Sorry, Lincoln, I'm going to actually embarrass you here and I do apologize for it. I don't mean this to be an embarrassment. But Ange talked about inspired youth and the deputy mayor has already indicated you're the youth citizen of the year. We're talking about the type of kids that are going to be using this facility, obviously your chair, they're your peers. Can you inform the council of some of the other awards and accolades you've held in the last four years? We won't go into detail.
Yeah, no, I've had the great privilege of being Latrobe City Council's youth council mayor for a year and sitting on youth council for two years. I've been a college captain at my junior high school, year 12. VCA Young Leader of the Year. I've been very privileged in the last couple of years, yeah.
So what we're saying is obviously there's a concern that we're going to have mispent youth.
Yep.
That is not you and it's not your peers either, is it?
No, no way. Look, every age group in Australia has 0.1% of people that do something wrong. And then that's what grabs the news. It's not the 99% of young people that are out there wanting to study, wanting to learn, wanting to play footy, wanting to have fun, just need a leg up and a need a hand and that's who we're targeting and that's who is coming through our doors. That's who we're helping each and every day.
Now, you did mention that this has been going for three years already.
Yep.
You did mention that if we don't do something, it could well end up in Shepherd and all elsewhere. But you also mentioned some issues not being addressed by not having a fully governed youth space there. Can you just touch on a couple of the issues that aren't being addressed?
Yeah, of course. So I think once we're in the service, one particular, be able to provide a location for Royal Children's Hospital to be able to send someone down to meet with kids who can't get up there, in a private room. That's something we want to be able to offer because it's not that easy to go to Melbourne for a five-minute appointment with some specialist with a title you can't pronounce. Those are some of the things we can't currently do in our space, we don't have the privacy available. That's something the new space offers. Things around music and those sorts of things. The new space offers enough room and enough closed rooms that we can start doing music and those sorts of things. Study time, the current space is tiny, no one can come in and have quiet study or have tutoring and those sorts of things. The new space can provide those sorts of activities, events and those sorts of things. Small events, you know, in the foyer and that's downstairs, we can have that in the new space, we can't where we are now. Yep, no worries, thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Thank you, Lincoln, very much. Oh, sorry, councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Just want to clarify two things. One is that this particular youth space will be operated by YMCA under the 4DHS, is that right?
Yeah, so it's the principal partner. So to, sort of created, our staff are technically employees of YMCA, but the Latrobe Youth Space itself is its own organisation that is run through the YMCA as one of its locations.
Just thinking about the accountability requirements there.
Yeah, 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 100%.
And my final comment or question would be, the range of activities that could be contemplated there include the Latrobe Youth Choir?
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, yes.
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor O'Callaghan?
If he's going to throw a youth choir, I can ask whoever I like. I think it's because you said you didn't want to hang out with the Nana and Pops at the Italian Australian Club. Councillor White's taken offence and he's now going to start a youth choir. Lincoln, can you talk a little bit about the co-design and collaboration process in terms of the actual youth involvement? Because I think what may be getting lost in amongst the papers that we have is the work that you and your colleagues and your peers have undertaken to get to this point around the actual planning of the process.
Yeah, 100%. So co-design team was a, yeah, group of young people that came together, that were brought, you know, DHHS and other organisations brought together the co-design team of young people and took them, as Sharon said, to locations to find the best place. And they met, what worked, what didn't, tick boxes, cross boxes. And eventually they settled on this location. So it was chosen by young people. It wasn't just, this is all we've got, it was out of what we have, this is going to work the best for young people in the valley. No worries.
Any further questions? Councillor Gibson?
Sorry, Lincoln, did you ever consider the old Pitcher Theatre?
I wasn't personally a part of the co-design team. But out of the five major final locations, I'm not sure it was one of them. But at the end of the day, those, what I'm guessing, what was put to the co-design team did definitely come down to, of course, who's the tender, the application about the government, the state government. So if they didn't see it as a viable option, they probably won't pitch the idea.
Depends whether it was considered or not.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
No worries.
Sharon can.
We're just a yes or a no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lincoln.
Thank you.
That ends me, councillors, we're looking for the mayor. Sorry, councillor Gibson?
Question, please. Now, you can actually bring this forward if you want and get it done and dusted while they're out the room or you can leave it as is.
I would, thank you.
No, he can't, but the mayor could.
I'm quite happy to wait for the mayor.
Can we? Because I think he's going to run to his seat faster than that so the mayor can come back.
Let's wait for the mayor to return. It's his meeting.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor McFarlane, for sharing and thank you, councillors. Let's find my spot, I'm pretty sure we're going to nine. Nothing held over. We're moving to item nine on our agenda, notices of motion. And 9.1. Notice of motion, do we have a mover for 9.1?
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
On the screen behind me.
And happy to second.
Seconder councillor Howe. Thank you, councillor Harriman as a mover, councillor Howe as a seconder. Any opposition? There's some opposition, thank you, I'll just mark that there is. Um, councillor Harriman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll try and be brief to make up for the last forty minutes. Um, the reason, the reason, the reason for putting this up, uh, is while this is not a policy of council, it is a major position and it has huge impacts on this area. Um, this policy or this position was actually made near on ten years ago in two thousand and ten. Council has a state government, uh, policy review that their, our major policies or all policies are reviewed every two years. So, this has been quite some time before it's been looked at. While it's not a policy, it is a major position. Um, I'd also point out, since this position was adopted, this council has had three elections and the majority of councillors in this room weren't around when this decision was made ten years ago. So, it's time for a review. Sorry. Some were. Some distinguished members of council were.
Oh, there we go.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. I think it's just relevant that we actually go back over it and review it. This is a very topical situation. I also point three, have it removed because I think something that's ten years old, we don't have anything else that would be of that age on our webs, uh, webpage. And it needs to be reviewed, it needs to be updated and it needs to be looked at by this council. As I said, it's been ten years, there's been three elections and the majority of councillors in this room weren't there when this, when this adopted position was taken. So, I just think it's timely that we have a review, that we take it off the website until such time. Pardon me, Mr Mayor, as this council's had the chance to review it properly. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe, you a seconder?
Yeah, just quickly, um, there's been so much change in this space over the last ten years. Uh, scientifically, there's, there's facts and things that we know now that we didn't know back then. Um, the community, they have a different view on it all of, of what, of what, um, they believe and what they expect, um, the leaders of their community to believe. Um, and technology is, is a lot different as far as, um, new emerging technologies with carbon capture and storage and carbon capture utilization. I think a, a look at the whole thing, um, is well overdue. Um, and I, I, um, support Dale, uh, sorry, councillor Howe Remins', um, motion and look forward to the results.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Uh, does anyone else like to speak to this, any, uh, councillor at all? Yep. Councillor McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I don't, uh, in principle, uh, oppose point one and point two of the recommendations. And I think it is, it is appropriate, as councillor Howe has said, for us to have a look and see where, where we currently are at. What I do oppose, Mr Mayor, is, um, the council still has a position, albeit, uh, two thousand and ten. And albeit right or wrong, it is still, until such time as it's changed, it is the council position. So, I don't believe that the, that we should be removing any information that is, is the most recent, uh, choice of the council, irrespective of what year that council was. Um, so it's fairly minor, I suppose, what my concerns are. I'm certainly happy with, um, uh, point one and point two of the proposed motion. Um, but I would like to see point three removed and, um, perhaps I'll foreshadow a motion if this motion doesn't proceed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McFarlane, thank you. Any other speakers for or against councillor Law?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Exactly the same as what councillor McFarlane has said. Uh, I think, uh, we set a precedent if, uh, number three is adopted because that just means anything that we have old on our website, if we believe it's obsolete, we just want to remove it. I just find that, that, that just can't happen. I just think this is, it's important, one and two, but, uh, to take down a position that we, that council has voted on, until we actually change it, it should stay there because otherwise it just sets a precedent which I don't believe we should be doing.
Thank you, councillor Law. Any other speakers? Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I also agree that the point of review for this matter, um, the consideration of it is timely. I think what we need to do is ensure that our evidence-based approach to the information that's contained within our position uh, is accurate and is broadly accepted. Uh, I think there is a range of scientific context that is even more informed now than it was in two thousand and ten. And that in itself could strengthen our position in relation to climate change. Uh, as my colleagues have also spoken to, I don't support point three, uh, in relation to this matter because I think removing not only the narrative but the position from the council website uh, doesn't serve any purpose other to, other than to erase from the public domain, uh, information that's been readily available over that ten year period. Um, it also takes away the historic context of the considerations of the council. And I don't think we need to make it any more difficult, uh, for our ratepayers or interested stakeholders to find information on our website, um, by taking things away. They would be able to go, uh, down into the deep dark archive of old council meetings and get the information or ask us for it anyway. So, I think if we just make it as publicly available as possible, we're probably, uh, in a better, more transparent position. Uh, also, as my colleagues have said, this was a decision taken by council. Um, but as councillor Harriman has alluded to, it was a long time ago. And although there, some of us don't necessarily remember the conversation. Uh, so all the more reason to have the conversation and the review. Uh, but I think we need to leave the context in place. Uh, on the basis of full transparency, I note councillor McFarlane's intent to foreshadow and, uh, fully support that approach so that the review can still take place. Uh, but the removal of the current context not be preceded with. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor O'Callaghan. Uh, any other speakers for or against councillor Middlemas?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the past ten years, uh, the state government and the federal government have all had two or three changes in their, uh, in their policy, uh, on climate change. And so it is very appropriate that we review our position. As councillor O'Callaghan says, uh, there is more information available and there are many different proposals out there at the moment, so we should review it. On clause three, I could get splinters. I'll sit on the fence. Um. If we leave it there and if some organisation makes a decision based on what they think is our position and then we change it only a few days later, we'll have misled them. My solution to the concerns on three would be simply to add a rider across the top of that policy. Please note, this policy is under review. That'd solve everything, couldn't deceive anybody. But I'm very happy with, uh, not that I'm not, no, I could probably, the mangled version is there at the moment I could go with. Uh, I'm, I'm, look, I'm very happy with one and two. And if it come to it, I'd be happy to vote support three, uh, because I don't want to just, uh, mislead people. But I'd much prefer to have it just across the top of it, under review at the moment. Thank you. Only while I was speaking.
Yep, thank you. All right. Uh, any other speakers for or against councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, being one of those, uh, um, what do we say? Well, use the word old timers, I suppose, but anyhow, longstanding councillors associated with this Latrobe City Council. I, um, am on the same page as councillor McFarlane on this one. I think that, uh, that at that particular time, two thousand and ten, there was a policy, uh, established, uh, uh, position established in relation to climate change. And, uh, and I agree that there, that it's appropriate that the council does undertake a review. But I think that, uh, for me, the, uh, the content that, uh, does currently exist can do with a little bit of a tweak, but it's generally, I think, in my, to my mind, is, uh, still, uh, uh, pretty much, uh, what, uh, I believe ought to be the, yeah, view of this council anyway. And so, uh, I think that, um, the idea of, uh, of accepting one and two and, um, uh, would be the most appropriate way to go. And, uh, I'm, if there's some way of, uh, embracing councillor Middlemas' suggestion of, uh, of the existing document having a tag on it that says that, uh, the council is about to undertake a review, something of that order, that would suit me too.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other speakers? Councillor Gibson, full deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Is not so old as some of those who were around that table. Yeah, but I'm not as old as the others. Um, look, I have no problem with point one and two, but I, I, I do have a concern if you have something up there when you're reviewing it. If there was a timeframe that, okay, it will be done in X amount of time and it wasn't there or it was there, that would help. Or alternatively, this is under review, even if it's posted up what the old decision is. But I think regardless of how this vote goes down, if it's not being, if it is being, um, kept on the website, that's fine, but it really has to be pointed out that it's under review. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Uh, there are no more speakers because everyone has spoken. So, councillor Harriman, this is your opportunity to close.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I do, do, uh, thank my colleagues for their, their thoughts. Um, obviously, one and two, we have a fairly, fairly strong support for, so I'll concentrate my thoughts on item three. Councillors, this was a notice of motion put up. It wasn't a report put to councillors. There was no supporting documentation on it. It was a notice of motion. Therefore, it's not actually, and, and the notice of motion was for an adopted position. So, there was no report backing it up. One of my reasons for wanting it taken down has been that there's been no report presented to this council to support or to not support the position council has taken. Also note that there are a lot of industries looking at this area that are looking at that and thinking that that is current, currently council's position. Whether we agree with it or not, we're taking into account that that's the stated position of council. We need to be able to, and my reason for taking it down is I'd, I'd be happy if we took it down and had this is currently under review because it is having an impact, businesses that are looking at this area. Either for or against, we need to have council, this council, twenty twenty, defined where we stand. I understand that councillors are saying that's a position we shouldn't take it down, but we need to have it taken down. And I'm happy to put on there, under review, so long as it's removed off the site. Because it's not, it's not a, a factual based position. If somebody comes to me and says, why did you support it? I can say we had a notice of motion. If somebody comes to me and said, why did we support? And I'm going to try and pick one that nobody's got a, a conflict of interest here tonight. Consideration of memorials in recognition of outstanding community members. I can point to a report in council that went through the risks, that went through the positives, that went through the negatives and came to a conclusion with the current policy, not, sorry, with the current adopted position, not policy, I cannot. And while it's up on our website, doing exactly the same, we cannot, for our ratepayers, tell them why that position is supported because there was no report put up. That's why I'm calling on a report to come to these councillors, so that we can debate it, that we can have the discussion and that we can come to a decision based on the facts put before us, not a notice of motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Harriman. Um, as discussed, uh, councillors, as we have looked at, uh, over the last couple of months, as a notice of motion can't be amended, we need to, uh, vote on the, the notice of motion that is in front of us at the moment. There's been an indication of a foreshadowed in the event that this one is lost. So, councillors, we put this to the vote, all in favour of the motion that is, uh, on the screen at the moment. Councillor Middlemas? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Howe? Councillor Harriman? All those against? Councillor McFarlane? Councillor Law? Councillor White? Councillor O'Callaghan and myself. So, that has been lost with a foreshadowed, um, motion that would come now to an alternate motion. Did you need time to work through that or did you want to put that as it was?
No, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to, um, for, for my, my proposed motion there would be that council one and council two and, and item three be deleted.
A mover and a seconder of that alternate recommendation, notice of motion or motion? Any opposition? Yep, sure. Uh, so I'll just mark, uh, McFarlane. Thank you, councillor Harriman. Um, councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak that now that we have a new motion?
I'll look briefly, uh, Mr Mayor. I think we've, um, had sufficient discussion on, on item one and two. But what this motion does propose, as different to the notice of motion, is that it doesn't take away what is a, a current position, as I said before, albeit, uh, ten years old. I certainly don't have an issue if, um, from an administrative point of view, and I'm not sure what we do with our website information, we're reviewing, uh, policies and processes all the time. So, I'm not sure whether we, we identify when they're under review or whether there may be some changes. Uh, I believe that's, uh, an administrative process that I don't think this council needs to get, uh, involved in. Other than to say that in two thousand and ten, a position was made by the council. Until such time as that position changes, I believe it is still a position of the council. So, it's really, really a, a process that I'm more concerned about, hence the motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much, councillor McFarlane, councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, further to councillor McFarlane's comments, I think this is, uh, a, a little more in, in line with what would be, um, our appropriate practice. Uh, and just for anyone who's looking to, um, dive into the great deep depths that are the archives, twenty second of March two thousand and ten and seventeenth of May two thousand and ten, for minutes around council decisions and report considerations from our offices in terms of what was available at the time. Um, if anyone is interested, don't know why you would be, it was a long time ago and a galaxy far, far away. Um, but that information is there and there was some, some reports that were considered in relation to that. But having said that, there has been a significant level of information, um, in the public domain, but also from informed scientific sources that we would not have had access to at that point in time. We're informing that position and, uh, clearly having the opportunity to review this policy, um, and keeping all of the context of the history to how we've got to this point, although it hasn't necessarily been in a timely ways of most advantage to our community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Harriman, did you want to speak?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I'm actually starting to get taken with councillor Middlemas's idea of under review, um, being placed there. So, I'll foreshadow if I can, the foreshadowed motion.
Talking about that.
Um, while I support what's there and it'll probably get up with a vote, I'm probably going to oppose it because I would like something in there that says this council is actually looking at a ten year old position. Every, everything else we do, no, sorry.
Thought you finished?
No, no, sorry. Every, everything, getting close. Everything else we do is two years and adopted positions we quite often change on a regular basis. And as councillor Middlemas has said, the government's position at a federal level has changed with every prime minister, which brings it to about forty-two different positions, I believe, since this came out. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. You had a.
Sorry, I was trying to ask a question so he could stay up and keep talking, um, because he may wish to. Uh, would it be possible, would the CEO be in a position if this was accepted, given that what we are doing is reviewing, to just add that without us requiring a decision? Because that's what he's actually.
That was a question I was going to ask of the CEO as well as from an administration point of view. Can you say that policies? That, that the policy is currently under review from a, um, while it's still in place?
Uh, sorry, um, is that the question? Would we be able to put something on our website to indicate that?
Sorry, my, my point was, yeah, that would actually enact it. So, based on it actually happening, all you would be doing is stating the fact that we're currently reviewing it. Would you be able to do that without there being a requirement of a foreshadow from councillor Harriman?
That's fairly straightforward and we could do that.
All right. Okay, all right. Uh, any other speakers? Councillor Middlemas?
Can I say that, uh, um, the process I've just witnessed takes it right back to where I was and on that basis I'll support this.
We went around. Any other speakers? No other speakers? Oh, I just asked. No other speakers? Oh, I'll just ask councillor McFarlane if you'd like to close. All right. As we have had speakers, councillors, I think we know where we're at with this, but we do need to show our hands with the foreshadowed motion that's on the table at the moment. All in favour, thank you. That's gone through unanimously with an undertaking from the CEO that he will be putting policy under review while it is under review. All right, thank you for working that through, councillors. We're moving to 9.2 is a notice of motion.
Moving that.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Seconder from councillor White, thank you very much. To have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Reason why I put this motion up is, I put a motion up a number of years ago. Seems like we've got a habit of doing this. And originally, it was to review the fees and charges we charge our community reps, our community organisations, because time and time again, we had community groups, schools, who can't afford to use our town halls. And it's just not acceptable, in my opinion. The community actually pay the rates, so to think that they can't afford to use their own town hall is a bit beyond reproach, in my opinion. So there was to be a review of fees and charges, and that was to be addressed. Well, the so-called review happened, but the intents behind it never got addressed. We still have different community groups who can't utilise the town halls, whether it be the schools, whether it be the Stedfords or anything else, and they're laying idle. These town halls, and I will speak especially for Moi, because I know the Moi Town Hall, they're laying idle, they're not being utilised. We've got VCAT in one room. But our community groups, we used to have an arts, an arts weekend with the, I think it was the Lions Club actually ran that. They can't afford to run it. There's the Stedford, they're not there anymore. The schools who do presentation night, they can't do it because they can't afford it. So what are we doing? And in the original report, it was, we had to look at all the other towns or areas that are like us and do our rates just like they do. But it didn't address our issues here. And at the end of the day, our people cannot utilise our town halls because they can't afford it. So I want to know why and what we can do to actually address that issue. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This particular notice of motion offered by councillor Gibson is timely, particularly from the review of how the operations of the Churchill Town Hall does, are undertaken. And I think that there is, it is timely that we undertake a review of the way in which the halls do operate and the way in which they are available to our community to be able to access and utilise. I think that what we're really needing is some innovation here, some new ideas, some new suggestions. And perhaps there needs to be, as a result of this notice of motion going through, if it does, that a working group is established to, of the various localities, to be able to work with the staff of the organisation here, to be able to come up with thoughts and suggestions about how we could better utilise the facilities, including the potentiality of, of perhaps a particular locality being, becoming the sponsorship even, sort of could be part of the equation, you know? I'm not saying it is, but all those sorts of out-there ideas could be thought about to see what the implications might be so that we can get this situation to exist, that we're spending all this money on maintaining these significant assets, and we really want to make sure that we maximise their utilisation.
Thank you, councillor White. Are there any other speakers for or against this motion? No? Councillor Gibson, would you like to close?
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, I thank my fellow councillor for supporting this because he's right. The dollars we actually spend to maintain our buildings, but our people can't use them, I think is a beggar's belief. It really does. Now, I had, at the time, a lot of opposition when I moved a motion about bringing the swimming lesson costs down and having a rate for, what is it, when you're on a healthcare card. Now, the concession, yes, thank you. Now, at the time, it was, I would suggest more the officers didn't like that suggestion. But actually, it worked. We have had more people utilise the swimming lessons and safety for our kids, so it did work. We are looking, we did look outside the box, much as I've got a kicking for it, but it worked. So it did. So why can't we do the same thing here? Because it needs to be addressed. What can we do? Think outside the square. That's okay. But at the end of the day, our people need to be able to use their hall.
Thank you very much, councillor Gibson. As I've had speakers, we'll put this to the vote. Councillors, all in favour of the motion that's in front of us? Unanimously. Thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
We have a number of people here waiting for item 14.4. I'm just wondering whether we may be able to bring that forward in the discussion?
Absolutely, we can do that. We certainly can at the discretion of the chair. We can move any item at any time, so thank you very much. We don't need to vote for that, but I think everyone's in favour of that. Yep. So I will step out of the chair at 14.4, and let me find it on the screen. Do you want to bring your book over, do you? All right. So councillor Law, councillor Middlemist, myself, will head out. Thank you.
You're going to do the alternative? Yeah, all right, done. I'm happy to share. Done.
Thank you, councillors. We're dealing with item 14.4. Councillor Harriman?
Moving an alternative, I might, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay, the alternative that is...
There's a couple of pages of it, Mr Mayor.
So councillor...
Twenty-three conditions on it?
Yeah. Councillor Harriman, mover. Councillor O'Callaghan. I thought, I thought that's what you were standing up for, councillor O'Callaghan. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the alternate motion? Everyone does have a hard copy? Councillor Harriman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to start off by thanking, sorry, no, not yet.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. No, because I thought councillor Harriman looked like he was ready to talk. Is there any opposition? Councillor Howe? Councillor Harriman?
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. First off, I'd actually like to thank the number of speakers that came in and spoke about this tonight, and spoke with passion. It's great to see that we have a group of people within our community that acknowledge the issues we face, that have gone out on their own and actually come up with a solution for it. The reason I've put up an alternate motion to grant a permit for the undertaking for the use of the land of Assembly as a youth centre is because my concern is that if we don't, we're going to lose the youth space. And if we lose the youth space, if we lose it to Sale, if we lose it to Shepherd, and if we lose it to Bendigo, then we're going to lose that group that's sitting over there right now, that have come here to fight for what they believe in. I cannot believe the passion we've heard tonight. I cannot believe the support that we've had for this tonight. I understand the officers' concerns of what it's next to. I also have gone and had a look at where the current youth space is, and it's next to a takeaway bottle shop. I've looked at Berry Street, which is opposite Moorwall RSL. I've looked at the Trobe City Council, which runs, as was mentioned tonight, a youth council with three licensed venues within a stone throw or a good cricketer's throw from the outer. But what has driven me most is the need within our community, as shone by our youth, that this service is not only needed, but has been so heavily utilised. The fact that we have, and it wasn't mentioned tonight, that some of the initiators of this programme three years ago are working as youth mentors, are riding on the buses to teach the youth that we've got what bus etiquette is, what public transport etiquette is, and they're getting a huge response. We're getting such a positive response from those kids that have donned the youth space shirt. We're getting a huge response from the kids turning up, and we're providing a service that this community has lacked for a long time and that this council and councils before it has been screaming out for the state government to provide. Here is the opportunity. We've asked for this. More than that, we've probably demanded it from the state government. Our youth have taken up the call and have fought to get it. It's been three years. It's needed. It's needed now, and it's needed in the space that has been chosen by our youth. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I'll try to stay away from the points already made by councillor Harriman, just to cover off on some of the other things. And I just wanted to acknowledge Kylie and the team from the Trobe Youth Space for all of the work that they've undertaken getting us to this point, and to truly support a co-designing collaborative process in relation to this. I had initially considered whether or not it would be appropriate to suggest to my colleagues a deferral to allow for some consideration in relation to the objectives, but also the proponent with a view to overcoming some of the challenges. Unfortunately, given the time constraints that are applied to these matters, council would reach a fail-to-determine mechanism being enacted, so there would be no advantage in us doing that. So we really do have to get on with it and reach a resolution on this one tonight. Councillor Harriman has acknowledged the proximity to schools, a bowling alley and the shopping centre. As was highlighted earlier through a question I had put, the Italian Australian Club was actually a venue for some of the consultations that were undertaken in relation to this project. Transport options are both direct and within line of sight of the venue. In relation to alcohol, as councillor Harriman has alluded, the supermarket and licensed venue within proximity to the current location. And there's also been advice in relation to that from the very early stages. What I did want to actually address in relation to the framework is that's been considered in relation to this is, there's a lot of mention of health and health services and health-related language, given the way that this has been bundled together and the way the application's considered. This is not what this service is, and in the nature of the provision of the activities that they have, it just happens to be where they sit within the framework. The problem with that is, there's also been reference to the Municipal Public Health and Wellbeing Plan, which many of you know I'm extremely familiar with. And it draws on that plan to use as a weight of evidence the lack of support for the application as well. I think it is inappropriately used, the plan. It's certainly not consistent with the context. And I think the application of the planning, policy and principles in relation to this, where it's applied in terms of the written content within the policy and the guide, isn't giving due consideration to the human factors in the application of those principles on the ground. There's certainly not a lot of consideration that young people may access any venue in Latrobe City, and they can do that in any way they wish, and they don't have to catch a train to get to it. And everything doesn't need to be bundled together. And saying that it should be in downtown Moorwall whilst it might be advantageous on some level, that doesn't offer any level of further advantage to a young person from Moi, Churchill or Bolara. So it doesn't actually give context to the reality of the circumstances of our young people. And on that basis, I am very, very happy to support councillor Harriman's alternate motion and the support for the youth space to be developed in this proposed location. I'm stretching the tolerance of the deputy mayor.
Councillor O'Callaghan? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. It's actually with a bit of a heavy heart that I talk against this alternate motion because I love the idea of having a new space. I think everybody here agrees. We all definitely agree. It's something we want, something we need on Latrobe City. But tonight's debate, it's not over whether we want it, need it or have it. It's where we have it. It's a planning decision. And it's not, it's not a good planning decision to place it where it's proposed to be put. Planning is a complicated area, and I like to try and keep it as black and white as I can. The decision that we make tonight is not only going to affect tonight, it will affect the future decisions. If we have somebody comes to us and it's in the reverse, they want to put a gaming venue or a venue that sells liquor near such a facility in the future, we've set a precedent to say that it's all right, even if we disagree with it. And that's what my concern is. I would like, what I would like is for the youth to get together with our officers, with our planning people, and go around and look at what sites, it's in an area of Latrobe City that is complementary to our planning scheme. Like I said, it's not that I don't want it. I'd love it to happen, but I have a stronger belief in our planning scheme, and I think that we should support that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Other speakers? Councillor White?
Yeah, I'm happy to support the motion that's before us. And I listened with interest to all of the speakers on this particular matter and the passion and commitment that was clearly evident and demonstrated during the presentations. And I was particularly interested to see Lincoln reinforce the idea that if, one of the concerns about this particular proposition to have this facility located at this proposed site is its proximity to the venue that has gambling, if you like, accessible nearby. And to me, I think that this, as Lincoln did indicate, when he pulled out his phone, he said, if I want to gamble, all I've got to do is use my phone. And so I think that reinforced to me the fact that the locality of the Italian Australian Club nearby is not a liability, but to me, I think it's probably more, should be viewed more as an asset because I think that it does represent an opportunity for those involved in the youth space to be able to experience going into the bistro or whatever it might be there, but also have the support of people from the youth space to make sure that they are able to be guided in terms of their management of themselves in relation to all things, including the problems associated with gambling that otherwise, that could be detrimental to them. But I think it does, to me, provide that experience and with the support and advice of the people associated with the youth space to be able to mature and really learn, to be able to cope with it in a constructive way. And I think the other thing that I particularly wanted to say about this particular proposition or this project or this project is the fact that it really, I think, gives the opportunity for the youngsters to be able to develop their confidence and their capacity to be able to take their position in life, but also for the... I was thinking to myself, then, the older folk in our community to be able to have respect for all these youngsters, who perhaps sometimes the elder ones of our community get a little bit nervous about because of not sure who they are and how they might operate. And so I think through this particular programme, it's going to be a fantastic thing for Mawall and the surrounding district, and it needs to be supported.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other speakers? Ask the question, any other speakers?
Thank you. You're next. Okay, look, I am so torn. I agree wholeheartedly with youth space, I don't have a problem with that. There is such a need for us. So, as I say, I am really torn, because I also understand our planning, how we have to view things, it's not on emotion. So, like councillor Middlemist said, I've got splinters. Not because I don't believe in... Yeah, well, you get that. Not because I don't believe in the programme, not at all. Not because there's not a need, not at all. None of that, it couldn't be further from the truth. The deferral that councillor O'Callaghan was suggesting, I think, could have been a better idea to get things over the line once and for all. That would be what I want to see, because it is so needed, and the time and effort that you've all put into it is just outstanding. So, as I say, I am so torn, because with my heart, I would give it to you in a flash. If I looked at it with planning principles and why, that would be a different story. So, as I say, I am just so torn, but it doesn't mean that I don't believe in the programme and want it to happen.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Harriman, you'd like to close the vote?
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. I want to actually answer councillor Gibson and councillor Howe's concerns. My understanding, and I'm happy for the general manager of planning to correct me on this, was that the youth space going next to the licensed venue at the Italian Australian Club is not actually against our planning regulations. What has been done is our officers have reversed planned, as in, would they approve? If the youth space was there first, would they approve the licensed venue coming next to it? And no, they wouldn't. And I can understand their concern, and I think it's great that we've actually got planners that are thinking like that. In this case, I think they got it wrong. What they've done, and to allay councillor Howe's concerns that we're setting a precedent, were not actually, because it's not against the planning determination for the youth centre to go next to a licensed venue. So we're not breaching any planning rules there. What stays in place is that if we had a youth centre and a licensed venue wanted to go next door, under the planning scheme, which we're not changing tonight, it still would be illegal, not illegal, against planning regulations for that venue to go there. So our planners would turn around and not approve it, and I think this council would stay on the same boat. So just to allay your fears that we're changing planning, that's actually what happened with this. So it's not actually against our planning regulations for this to go ahead, it actually fits within it, but our planners being prudent, reversed, planned it, if you like, and put it what happens if the licensed venue came in. The second point, I know there's an objection, and a couple of people mentioned it, the asbestos on site. Just to allay those fears, I'd like to point to items 16 and 17. 16 stating, "Building works conducted on the site in relation to renovations, additions, must be undertaken in accordance with the document Asbestos Division 6 Survey, conducted by LRM Global 22nd of the 8th 2019, to prevent contamination and exposure to contractors and final users of the facility." And point 17, "Appropriately licensed asbestos removalists are to complete the works of treatment and removal from the site," which I think would take out about two at least objectives, because that was their main concern. Once again, I'd like to thank those people that came in support of this tonight. While it is a planning measure, it does meet our planning regulations, and it is something that is desperately needed in this community, and Lincoln made the point. This has been three years and we still haven't got a site. The funding is coming up, if this site isn't approved, the chances are we can kiss goodbye our youth space. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. So councillors, we're aware that we are voting on the alternate motion, which proposes to issue a notice of decision to grant a permit. Can I have those in favour of that motion, please? Councillor Harriman, councillor White, councillor O'Callaghan and myself. Against the motion? Councillor Howe? Councillor Gibson? Okay. We're just waiting on the mayor, folks.
Councillors, thank you. I'm back in the chair, and I propose to adjourn for a short break. Thank you. We just hold the meeting at eight minutes past eight.
Sack a look, yep, we are, we are back. Thank you for the, for the quick break. Good opportunity to regroup. We're moving now to ten point one. And I note to you councillor Gibson, you're moving ten point one. I have a second for that. Councillor Law, thank you. Any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this?
Just quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Right. Now, in the actual motion, it has about note, point two, notes that the path requested is included in the existing endorsed plan in year five. What that actually means is we're doing our budget deliberations now, which is for 2021, so the next 12 months, and that's year four. So it's actually the following year. So come June next year, any time after then, that should actually be implemented and the residents will have their paths with safety, everything addressed. So they actually get the path that they're after. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Law.
Yeah, just quickly, it's, we're just building a brand new estate in Mitchell Grove down there and there's a over fifty-five component to the, to that new estate and it's very beneficial like everyone, we, we're all about getting healthier and walking and doing all the rest. So it's a direct access back up through into the, the shopping centre. So it just helps everybody in a safe and better manner get from their new estate into the centre of town without using a car, just like we've had on fourteen point four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers to this motion, for or against? Councillor Gibson, would you like to close? Okay, thank you. We have had speakers, so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour unanimously? Thank you very much councillors. Moving to fourteen point one. Nothing at eleven, twelve or thirteen, so fourteen, fourteen point one. Councillor Harriman.
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Got a mover?
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
We've got a second, I thank you very much councillor Howe. Any opposition? Councillor Harriman, would you like to speak?
I will, Mr Mayor, I wasn't going to. Just as way of explanation, this is a report that's come back to council from a notice of motion this council approved a number of months ago. Basically what we're looking at is, I've got the wrong one, excuse me, Mr Mayor. Yeah, fourteen one, got it. The CFA have to, under, by planning law, provide a report back on any bushfire overlay. Now unfortunately, from what I've been led to believe, and I think is in the report, we believe there's only one person at the CFA looking after the entire Victoria for every house that has a bushfire overlay on it, which is a large percentage in regional and rural Victoria. That is just too much work for one person to do. And what is happening is that person's workload is getting more and more and more. And a lot of the time, the, the default position from what I think comes in the report and what I've heard anecdotally from some CFA people, is that if a report's due and they haven't done the work on it, then they can't approve it. And that's causing problems. It causes a lot of delays for our planners that are trying to do the right thing and come up with a decision within time. And they're being delayed because they're not getting the reports back from the CFA. And again, it's not the fault of the single person that's trying to do this job at the CFA, it's a matter of funding. And what this basically calls on is that we push through a letter to the minister and also through the Municipal Association of Victoria, which is our peak body, that the state government actually fund the work to be done to a level that is sufficient to help planning all over the state. So basically, it's a call for aid to the CFA and to this poor person that is trying to do a pile of work all on her lonesome. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe.
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, our planning team quite often relies on other state government departments and authorities such as the CFA or Gibbsland Water or DLP or Regional Roads, wherever. So we need them to be nimble and we need them to be efficient so we can in turn meet our customers' expectations. You know, the CFA currently is, I think they're sitting at around about nine and a half day turnaround, which even though it's still below the requirement of twenty-eight days, it's still notably higher than all our other referrals. So this isn't, as councillor Harriman said, it's not about giving anyone a whack, it's saying let's, let's provide them with the proper resources so they can get their job done and in turn we can then satisfy our planning requirements.
Are there any other speakers?
Can I just seek some clarification, thanks to the CEO and it might have to go to the senior planners, just about the number of staff. I noticed in the report it had staff shortages, but I couldn't see about the single person. I just, just the fact that we've spoken about that in the debate, I just wanted to clarify if that was anecdotal or? Thirty-three? Sorry, I was on thirty-one. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we'll have to defer to the writers of the report and whether they can provide that detail. Handing them a microphone, page.
Thanks. Got it. Yep, under proponent, so thanks very much. Yeah, I probably don't need clarification for this, the councillor, councillor Harriman has pointed that out to me, I did miss that earlier, earlier on, so. Yeah. Yeah, no, I was just seeking clarification on the single staff member, but there it is. I'd noticed earlier in the report about the shortage, just wanted to clarify that. Now, is there another speaker, would you like to, you have, we have got one more. Councillor White.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right, that in page thirty-three of the report, it does say that to the best of our knowledge, talking about such that council, CFA has only one dedicated strategic planning officer for the state. But the other thing too, that I think is important within this report, is that from the council's point of view, as a key piece of further work, a municipal bushfire assessment is being undertaken to consider where the most appropriate rural living areas, amongst other things, should be developed. The input of the CFA into this document has been critical and has provided support to council during its drafting. State planning policy changes that have occurred are expected to significantly reduce the growth opportunities for regional areas and remove the choice from our community on where to live. For example, in rural living areas with a bushfire risk. Now, this, this particular aspect is not a resource issue however, rather a policy challenge. And the lack of direction and certainty being provided by the CFA and the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning is at times making it challenging to navigate this difficult space. We understand that the new guidelines are being finalized by DLP to guide future settlement planning, particularly in relation to bushfire planning. While there have been some difficulties, there have certainly been instances where appropriate support from the CFA has been provided to council proponents. So statutory planning matters are dealt with more efficiently and CFA's performance in terms of providing statutory planning responses to bushfire matters is considered satisfactory. CFA's response time is considerably higher than a number of other referral agencies council must refer applications to. So I think that there's a couple of things going on here, Mr Mayor, and I think that the, the, the proposed resolution of writing to the minister for planning in relation to this particular matter and together with that having a motion gave before the MAV, State Council Meeting on the fifteenth of May, really will put emphasis and accentuation, if that's the right word, in relation to these matters and hopefully will stimulate a good response.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Harriman, to close? Okay, thank you very much. As we have had speakers, we'll put this to the vote. All those in favour? As unanimously, thank you very much. Four point, fourteen point two.
Question please.
Yes, councillor Gibson.
Now, when we had speakers on this motion and one of them was saying about a WorkSafe notes and insurance claim with non-compliance, can I ask the officers about those and where it sits with all of this, please?
Through you, Mr Mayor, there was, those questions had been asked previously and it was circulated to council, particularly in relation to WorkSafe investigation. So the response in relation to that was that that's a matter of responsibility of the business operator and is regulated by WorkSafe. And in relation to the insurance claim, it's a civil matter between the two parties, it's not actually part of the planning permit process and they're both not planning considerations.
There's my copy as well if you need it. Thank you. All right. Happy with that councillor Gibson? Yep, okay, do I have a mover? Fourteen two. Thank you councillor McFarlane. Do I have a second? Councillor Law? Any opposition? Thank you. Councillor McFarlane.
Mr Mayor, we have had some discussion on this and I think the document that's just been circulated has clarified a number of issues that, that might come. But I'm certainly having, having read the report and having read the supplementary document, am satisfied that, that this use is appropriate in, in an industrial area. And I believe the conditions that the, the planners have put on the permit go a long way to address the concerns that have been raised. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. Councillor Law?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. As my councillor has just stated, that under, that the planning department has actually put a whole host of recommendations for this to proceed, to make it satisfactory for neighbouring businesses and the like. So I have no issue with this, the way it stands. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Law. Councillor Harriman, did you wish to speak?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, just to raise a couple of points, I am very aware of the points raised about health and safety, which, which worry me. I know it's an industrial site, I know it's, it's for a purpose of industry. My concern comes in a couple of points, first one being the health and safety issues raised. We cannot approve a site that's putting other sites and other workers at risk. And that, that raises a lot of red flags with me. The second point is again with the flooding. If I'm not mistaken, this council has actually fined severely other industrial sites that have actually changed the lay of the land, that haven't even caused flooding and, and damage to other buildings. We actually have a, a number of sites in Maul that have been fined, where they've graded the land and changed the slope and the design without having an effect on their, their neighbours. But have still been fined because they've altered the runoff and the lay of the land. So my concern with that is still there. I can understand a lot of councillors are happy with it, but as I said, when it comes to the health and safety of surrounding businesses and them being at risk, that raises a number of red flags with me. And my view is very, very simple, no one has the right to run a business that puts other lives at risk. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Are there any other speakers for this? Councillor Middlemister.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This issue raises with me the somewhat farcical situation with the planning regulations in Victoria. We are being asked to approve changes to the layout, buildings etcetera, on a block of land, all of which have already been made, already done, already constructed. It's a bit of a farce to pick up the attachments to the, to the report and find buildings labelled proposed when you know they've been there for five or six years. We're being asked to authorise, back-authorise something which the applicant appears to have done without authority. So park that aside as one issue. The second issue is, it is an industrial zone, yet some of the activities in it are impacting, shall I say, on a Johnny come lately basis, they're impacting existing businesses around them. Yet again, the situation with the planning is, it's allowed to happen because it's an industrial zone and this is legal. So here we have a situation where we're being asked to, shall we say, back-validate what has already been done and we're being asked to authorise, shall we say, activities which may not be acceptable. In both cases, first case, we've got the authority to do so and in the second case, we have no authority to refuse it on the grounds that people are complaining about. So all I can say is I compliment the officers on their attempts to put conditions on this backdated permit, which goes some way towards addressing the concerns of the people in the neighbourhood and they have put some, quite a bit of work into doing this. But again, I think I'd characterise this as largely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Middlemister. Are there any other speakers? Certainly.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, through you to the CEO and the officers, my understanding is this is a planning permit, so we're not actually, are we authorising the buildings or do they have to then go and get a building permit to put the buildings where they are? So that, that's my question, what, I understand this is a planning permit, but we've already got buildings in place and we've got a number of, number of issues I have with shipping containers used as training classrooms, but beside that point, does that have to come back to council on another application? Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Get the CEO to respond.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I've just asked my general manager of regional city growth and investment, she's able to respond to that one. So in terms of the, or the manager for regional city planning, one or the other. And so in terms of whether a further approval would be required once the planning permit is, if it is issued.
Through you, Mr Mayor, so there wouldn't be a requirement for a further approval under planning legislation, but there may be under building legislation, which would be handled by a private building surveyor.
Happy with that? Councillor Howe.
Just a question also, quickly please, Mr Mayor. It's been indicated that the drainage and water issue, there's been an interim solution being recommended by the council engineers, which is understood to be completed, has I confirmed that that's correct.
The drainage has been completed?
Yeah.
Through you again, Mr Mayor, I just have to ask someone who's more in favour with the application in terms of this detail, whether that actually has been approved?
So again, through you, Mr Mayor, our understanding is that, that those works have taken place and through the permit, the conditions on the permit, it'll also be monitored as well.
Another question?
My question is, okay, if they're not adhered to, then what?
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor, so if the planning permit conditions aren't adhered to, so we do have a process for reviewing all of our applications and that's only a sample, but if there are complaints, we would also go and check on the particular application itself to assess whether the conditions are being met. And then if they're not being met, there's action that's taken to require the applicant to conform and if that then doesn't occur, then there's a further process that we can undertake, which means we end up taking matters to VCAT enforcement orders.
Yes.
When the officer was giving the answer to questions about the drainage works being done or not, I was looking straight at one of the objectors who was sitting in the gallery and shook his head to indicate that the work had not been done. Can we ask the officer again, are we positive?
Asking again if we're positive. Has the drainage work been done is the second question.
I'm guided by the fact that one of the objectors is sitting directly in front of you and indicated the work hasn't been done. I mean, it had the work done, but the water still comes in.
Right. So the, so the answer was? The answer to the question was the work has been done, yes. Okay, I just think that the general manager and the planning team are just having a conversation.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, through you. There is a permit condition on this current permit or on this agenda item that actually requires a stormwater management plan to be undertaken, which will, in addition to the works that have already been done, should help alleviate the problem and that'll be monitored moving forward.
Right, thank you. Councillor Gibson has a question as well.
Two, two questions if you don't mind. So if we're saying that the actual work has been completed, but the objector is saying, no, it's not satisfactory, so where to look at compliance? Where is that left?
Through you, Mr Mayor, so if the permit is endorsed as the or notice of decision is issued in terms of issuing a permit, then, as I said earlier, there is a process whereby council would undertake, if there are complaints, further inspections to ensure that the conditions are met. And as the general managers indicated, there's obviously work that's already been undertaken, but there's further work that will be required through a stormwater management plan. And so then if things aren't then complied with, as I said earlier, there'd be a process for council officers to intervene and assess whether that has actually occurred as per the permit conditions. And if it hasn't, then there's a process to be followed to ensure that compliance is met.
Okay, one more? Okay. Now, under planning rules, say we say no and this goes to VCAT. If I've got it right, it's ticking all the boxes that it will actually comply with a permit. And if it goes to VCAT with us saying no, all those conditions that we've tried to ensure that the objector has actually got some safety, they can all go.
So through you, Mr Mayor. So if VCAT would then, if it went to VCAT, they would make the determination in terms of what conditions? So there could be the position that some of the conditions that officers have put forward may not be included in a permit, but there could also be other conditions that haven't been put forward that are then put into the permit. So it really depends on the submission process of VCAT, the quality of information they receive and the determination that they make as to what conditions go on the permit.
Thank you.
Councillor Howe?
We assume that the flooding and the water issues will be there regardless of whether they're operating or they're not operating? The water's still going to flow? Not relying on them operating, I suppose, is the question.
I'm not quite following the question. Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Will the flooding still be an issue? Is flooding additional to them operating or not operating? If the water rains and they've got to wake up, will it still flood? In relation to, they need to be good or whether they cause a flood?
Through you, Miss Mayor. I'm not exactly sure as to whether, if their operations on site would impact on stormwater drainage during operations, I suppose is the question. I'm not sure what the answer would be. I should check with my general manager if they're able to provide some further information.
So through you, Mr Mayor, that's what the condition around the stormwater management plan is there for, to consider all that and to come up with a plan so that it'll be resolved. So that's why that condition is there.
Does that answer that question?
No. I think councillor Howe's question was more around the, does does operation change the course or flow of water to non-operation as in a dormant Sunday or a holiday? Does, is the flood management plan change if people are there or not there? Is it affected by people is the question? Yeah.
Yeah, our response to that is that it's just purely affected by the operation of the land. So whether there's people there or not there.
Thanks. Happy with that? Okay. We've had four speakers. Is anyone else would like to speak to this?
Yes, from where I see, the best way to manage is moving forward is to grant this permit. That way we've got control of what's going on. We can then enforce any breaches. If we don't, it will go to VCAT. What's the timeline for VCAT at the moment? Forever and a day. So they'll be operating forever and a day without having to do anything, I'm assuming. This way, they're locked into times. We've just heard it's not going to make any difference whether they're operating or not. The water issues apparently are going to be there whether they're operating or they're not operating. At least this way, there is a timeline that we can go and wield the stick if we have to. It is our policy as a council to support retrospective planning when it comes to businesses rather than that they go in and shut them down. So that's all.
Thanks councillor Howe. Any other speakers for this? No other speakers. Councillor McFarlane, would you like to close?
Well, just briefly, Mr Mayor, and just picking up on councillor Howe's comment on retrospectivity. We have seen in this chamber on a number of instances, permits come forward for uses that have commenced without the appropriate permits. And I would go so far to say if we really did a drill down into our community, we'd find there's lots of operations happening without a permit. So yes, we've got a responsibility, one to ensure that all operators are operating appropriately. And that's what this permit here is for us to consider today. I don't believe we should be making a decision on whether it gets through VCAT or wouldn't get through VCAT. I think we've got to make a decision based on the facts. At the end of the day, either party can go to VCAT, so that's really outside of our control anyway. I just believe in this instance, it's something that's been happening for a number of years. It's grown. Now that it's come to light and a permit application's come in, there's significant conditions put there to control and ensure that the whole neighbourhood is considered in that process. I don't believe we have any other option. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. As we've had speakers, we need to put this to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor McFarlane? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Law? Councillor Howe? Councillor White? Councillor Callaghan and myself against? Councillor Middlemas? And councillor Harriman? So that has been passed. Thank you councillors. And thank you to the officers for working that one through. Fourteen three. So use the development of land in Yunnar for an RV stop, free, I believe. Free RV, okay. So I moved. Thank you very much councillor White. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Gibson, thank you. Any opposition to this? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, as always. Try and be brief. This particular proposal is one that really is trailblazing, if you like, for this municipality. And I guess that it's, as the speaker did indicate tonight, Kevin, Kevin Young, that this is really, if you like, a pilot project. And I think that this is going to be a terrific innovation for the township of Yunnar in regard to being able to attract people who are with caravans and RVs to be able to perhaps park there for a couple of days, to be able to enjoy the experience of a small country town. And in particular, when they have the string busters there at the hotel on once a month and all those sorts of events, that this will really mean that there's an opportunity to make, to add to the numbers who have experienced those events. There is certainly a great array of conditions that have been put together for this particular proposal. I know that the Yunnan Community Association is quite behind this particular project in terms of supporting the efforts of the secretary of the association, Kevin, in regard to getting this project to the table tonight. And certainly in that regard, there's been a lot of discussion, negotiation along the way in terms of how it might look there and in terms of within the association itself, but more importantly with the local neighbourhood, to be able to get a result that is acceptable and compatible to all concerned. And so I think that what we have here tonight is a good proposition that is certainly worthy of our support.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor Gibson? Any other speakers to this motion? Councillor Law, you have an opportunity to close and debate yourself? No? Okay. All right, then we had speakers. So all those in favour, please raise a hand. And that is all of us unanimously. It has been passed. Thank you. We move to fourteen point four, which we've dealt with already. We will not be going back over it again. We move to fifteen point one, which is the Trowogan Youth Activity Precinct.
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Howe?
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Harriman is the seconder. Any opposition? Councillor Howe?
This is just the next step in the process. We started approximately eight or nine months ago. We selected four or five sites around Trowogan that would be suitable for a youth precinct. We narrowed that down to two. We've got two designs made up. Next step is to put it out to the public for their comments. Just a thing, a couple of things to remember, it is for a youth precinct. So that's probably five years to 25 years old. It's not just about roller skating. We can have whatever the youth of today want to have or they feel they want to have there. And that's what I encourage. We encourage all different ideas to try and make it special and make it relevant to today's people. And just to note that it's not funded. This is going to be, we'll have this design in our drawer, ready to go, just in case we can see the appropriate funding streams at a future date. So very happy to support.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Harriman, did you want to speak?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. I was very fortunate two years ago to sit down with a group of youth at the Trowogan Skate Park, current one, and discuss with them their desire to get a new skate park, a new facility. And I thought it was great that they were willing to form their own committee, that they had a desire to achieve something better within the community. They formed their own committee. They went out themselves and started canvassing their school friends. And as councillor Howe said, this was a group of kids that were aged from 12 till about 19. Did have two world-ranked scooter riders in there, which is always handy. But kids of that age that have gone out, have canvassed their school friends, have got the petition going, have got thousands of signatures on a petition. And this is another step in that process. And as councillor Howe pointed out, this is not fully funded. It's not funded at all. But it continues the process to where, to the point where the youth can have their say on where they want this located. The design's not set in stone, but we've got a fairly good idea. And this isn't only about, as councillor Howe said, this isn't about 40-year-olds deciding or 50-year-olds deciding what the youth are going to have. This is something that we want youth input on and a design that they're happy with, that fits their needs and that fits the needs of the community. So I fully endorse this to councillors and I ask those that have signed the petition and been involved in the committee to get on board and get your views in. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Does anyone else like to speak to this motion, either for or against? No, then councillor Howe, you have an opportunity to close. Okay, thank you. All in favour? Unanimously, thank you very much. Fifteen two is consideration of memorials and recognition for outstanding community members. Councillor Howe?
Would you like to move, please, Mr Mayor?
Councillor McFarlane is seconding. Any opposition to this councillors? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Yeah, briefly, I just thought I would just talk a little bit about Mr Richard Jeffries and then I'd hand it over to our central ward councillor to talk about Mr Williamson. Richard Jeffries, icon of Trowogan. He ran the Jeffries Department Store from age 24. Member of the Trowogan Rotary Club from 1959, holding every position the club had, including president. He was a recipient of the Ruby Paul Harris Fellowship. He's been enrolled in the Rotary International Heritage Hall of Fame. The Rotary Club has awarded an annual Richard Jeffries Scholarship Award at the Federation University Business School. He's a member of this, he was a member of the Trowogan City Council, active member of the Trowogan Chamber of Commerce. He's a member of the Trowogan Historical Society, member of the Trowogan Harriers, the Trowogan and Mawall Peddlers Society, which was a cycling club. Mr Jeffries, he was a family man and he was a true gentleman. I think he's most worthy of having a memorial clock commemorating his public contributions to Trowogan. And with his passion for running, riding and in later life, walking, I think the Trowogan and Mawall shared path is an appropriate place.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor and councillor Howe. Just a few words on Max Williamson, a true gentleman, had been here for many years, initially working with the SEC, very involved in the local community for more than 40 years. An integral member of the Lions Club of Mawall and I had the pleasure of being in that club with him some many years ago. And Max's ethics and values flowed out from that time and every year after that that I knew him. He was involved in the Mawall JCs, Mawall High School Council Member and the Victorian Public Transport Forum. In my council term and with councillor Middlemas, Max was on our Mawall Town Common Committee and a real driver on that committee. And something that I wasn't aware of until just near his death was he had been actively involved with Latrobe Valley Enterprises. And things like Advanced Mall, Early Bank Homestead, Legacy Place in Commercial Road, Christmas Decorations, wherever there was something local and community-based, Max was in there, certainly having his say and driving things forward. So I think in terms of both Max and Mr Jeffrey, these memorials are very appropriate. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. Any other councillor wish to speak to this motion? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise just to support the comments that have been made by both councillor Howe and councillor McFarlane. And I just wanted to also add that in relation to Max Williamson, as I recall, he was, if he wasn't the anchor man, he was close to the anchor man for the building of the Mawall Community Playground in three days. And that particular project was a unique one that was undertaken during his time of community involvement and it was a fantastic achievement.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers to this recommendation? Motion? All right. Councillor Howe, you have the opportunity to close? Okay, then we have had the speaker, so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Is all unanimously passed. Thank you councillors. Fifteen three. Costing and options to construct Savage Road Mowie. Councillor Gibson?
Moving and a question please.
All right.
The question is, on page 174, the estimates should be considered a concept only and if it is determined to proceed, a design undertaken and a proper cost plan developed. Considering that the other motion that we passed is stating that this is going to go ahead in not this coming year, the following year. So I would assume, hopefully rightly, that yes, the design will be undertaken and that will all go ahead. Is that the case, please?
Through you, Miss Mayor. So if council were to adopt the project in a future budget, as you'd indicated, I think, earlier in the night, what's shown in this report is indicative costings. So we would then do a more detailed design and establish what the actual costings are. Ultimately, the actual cost of a project will be determined when we tender the project. But we base it on estimates in terms of getting it in the budget. And once it is tendered, if it fits within our budget, we deliver it. If it's outside of the budget, we may need to talk to council about, well, how do we actually achieve the project? Either with additional funding or re-scope the project typically. So we'd be looking to include that in a future budget for council to consider.
Another one?
Another question?
They should be quite happy and at ease that it's already been said it will be in the following year's budget. Because that's what we moved in the previous motion.
Just reading that.
Because it's in the year five plan.
So through you, Miss Mayor. So in endorsing, it's already in our longer-term plan in terms of the year five, I think it was in tracks trials and passed one of those particular programs. However, we still have to consider each year, each financial year, whether council allocates a particular amount of money. So for the 2021 budget that we're now developing, that'll be coming before council in a couple of months' time. There may be an item in there for pathways. And if council can afford to deliver all the projects we had identified, then they would be. But there may not be sufficient funding, so we need to work through the budget process to determine how much is actually allocated in each financial year. So I can't say that council will allocate in two years' time. It's a consideration at that financial year as to whether it is funded or not.
And just for clarification, at item 10.1, it doesn't say in the resolution that went through that it would commit to the budget? Yep, yep. Still moving? Okay, we have a mover? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Law? Any opposition? No opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak to this? Councillor Gibson, before you rise to speak, just as chair, I noticed that we have fifteen seconds until nine o'clock, and if we go past nine o'clock, I need a resolution of council to continue, so do I have a mover for that?
Mover.
Thank you councillor Harriman, and a second here, all in favour? We shall continue past nine o'clock. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yes, I'm happy to receive this and note the report, um, although I, I would be happy that it was guaranteed, but I understand that it is in the year five, um, plan, Tracks and Trails plan, and normally we do adopt as is. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Law, do you want to speak to this? No, don't want to speak to it. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? No, councillor Gibson, did you wish to close? No, then we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Nine of us, he's unanimous, thank you very much. Fifteen-four, Kingsford Reserve Master Plan, I'll just pull up my report. Moving?
Moving.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Seconding councillor Law. Any opposition to this? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As per my fellow councillors did, just a few items earlier with their Trelgyn Skate Park plan, this too is part of the, the journey it takes, anything to actually get approved. And we, we have actually had a meeting, I think we had the meeting? Yeah, about eight months ago, we had, um, room full of people who were very passionate about this area and said, don't sell it. We asked them what they wanted, the submissions came back and this is what has come out of that, um, that process. So now we're releasing that back to the community, so they have their say again with it. And as per the normal, um, process, we asked the community, but as per the same as the Trelgyn Skate Park, neither have got funding attached to them. It's getting the process in place, the plan of what we want, so when and if funding is available, it's ready to go.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Is councillor Law, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly, um, the Kingsford Street Reserve is a, is a fair swag of land in the centre of town and it's, um, got some unsightly buildings, a few things have been tried, um, which have failed, and we have tried in the past to sell the, on sell the land as a tri-youth housing project, which, uh, failed as well. So basically what the community has asked is what can we come up with that can best use this space? And this master plan, thanks to our, good work of our staff, has come up with something that is quite good, and I think it'll, then it'll just be a natural possession for the, um, uh, public to have another look at it and hopefully we can get this across the line. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Law. Any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to close? Okay, then we have had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour of this? It's unanimously through of all nine councillors, thank you very much. Moving to sixteen-one, which is Latrobe Leisure minus Service Review. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor Middlemas, you're moving? A seconder? Councillor McFarlane is a seconder. Any opposition? Councillor White noted in opposition. Councillor Middlemas?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I should start by giving councillor White a speech, shouldn't I, but, uh, I'll help councillor White here. I'll draw his attention to the council plan objective of this report, and it is to improve the livability and connectedness, connectiveness of Latrobe City. That's quite wrong, isn't it? Because we're cutting services back. But, uh, if we have a look at this, this is an opportunity for us to save thirty-one thousand dollars a year by cutting back on services we provide which are not used. And if people move to page three hundred and one, three hundred and two of the report, and I'll just use Monday night as an example, um, the Moor Leisure Centre stays open till nine-thirty P M on a Monday night, and between nine o'clock and nine-thirty P M, we have zero number of patrons. So, uh, what this proposes is cutting back service times where there are no patrons or where almost minimal number of patrons. The effect on the community or the users of our leisure centres should be nearly zero and it does give us a chance to cut thirty-one thousand out of our already tight budget. Um, a very small impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemas. Councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak? Reserve. Councillor White noted in opposition, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, um, um, I suppose I'm having a bit of councillor Middlemas's problem and councillor Gibson for that matter, getting a few splinters, but, um, in relation to this particular matter, I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, the efforts that are going in to try and, uh, make sure that, uh, every dollar we, uh, we spend in this place is, uh, is as value added to it. And, uh, but on the other hand, I also, um, uh, see it from, if you like, in the eyes of the community, that, uh, that, uh, these particular facilities are there to be able to be accessed by our community and, uh, and, um, and so what I'm, uh, just wrestling with, if you like, is the, whether or not, uh, what, well, in fact, what has been the consultation or the conversation that might have been had with the, with the users of these various locales, we're talking about Moe, Moor and Trelgyn Leisure Centres and in relation to these items. And, uh, so, uh, and I know that in the report that we're, we're preparing, it is number five and the recommendation is to prepare and deliver a detailed community engagement strategy prior to implementation of the changes, but I think that, uh, what we're saying here is, if it goes the way it's proposed here, that we're going to be, uh, we, we make the decision and then we tell them, rather than we make a, a recommendation and test it with the community to be sure that, uh, we've, uh, we've, uh, got, uh, our facts right and our understanding right and what other potential opportunities to, if you like, to enhance utilization in those times where the numbers have dwindled, it would appear. So that's my dilemma, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers to this? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I note what my fellow councillor has said about hardly anybody being there, as a person who occasionally does laps, uh, and I have over the weekend been down there and done some laps, there's hardly anybody there at those times, so I, I, I agree with that, but, um, two things. One is, have we actually asked the community? Um, and the other, if we're doing a review, is now the right time to do this?
Thank you councillor Gibson. Any other speakers? Councillor McFarlane, you're reserved, you're right to speak, did you want to speak now? Okay. Councillor Middlemas, you were the mover, you have an opportunity to close.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've wrenched the splinter. I've suffered the pain. Um, all I can say to round this off is very small number of people that will be affected and I'm sure if we've got it wrong, we will hear. We'll get the opportunity again if, if, if we've got this wrong. I don't think we have, very tiny number of people, I think it can change, change their usage fractionally, thirty-one thousand dollars saved, but if we have got it wrong, we will hear and no doubt we will fix. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemas. I've had speaker, so we need to put this to the vote, all in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Middlemas, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan and myself. Those against, councillor White. Sorry councillor White, I missed you there. Thank you very much councillors. We're moving to seventeen-one. Uh, councillor McFarlane, I note you as a mover.
Second.
Councillor White as a seconder. This is the Audit and Risk Advisory Committee, um, matters. Any opposition? No opposition? Councillor McFarlane?
Oh, just briefly, Mr Mayor, this, um, this report just identifies the, um, tweaking of our, uh, risk, Audit and Risk Committee Charter to ensure that we, um, we, we retain, um, two very capable, skilled, um, and, and excellent, uh, external members of that committee and also allows then for a timely transition through to, um, to having, everyone having some space before the next person's appointed. So I think it's been a good outcome for a, a bit of a short-term problem that we're walking down the, the barrel at. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor McFarlane. Councillor White?
Councillor McFarlane said it all.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to this, either for or against? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to close? Councillor Gibson, we're going to need you back in the chamber for, um, oh, she's, councillor Gibson's still in the room but just, uh, out of sight, but we'll need you here for this vote. Uh, those in favour? It's unanimously carried, thank you very much councillors. We move to seventeen point two, Arc Unar Loan Guarantee. Councillor White? Thank you very much. Councillor Middlemas as a seconder. Any councillors in opposition? Councillor White, do you wish to speak to this?
And it, very briefly, Mr Mayor, to say that, uh, this is, uh, part of a, uh, uh, excuse me, the Art Resources Collective, our Arc Unar, as we otherwise know, are, uh, really wanting to, uh, have an impact in relation to the facilities they have out there and this is a, a first stage that they're wanting to get on with and, uh, they're looking for, uh, if you like, an underwriting from this council in relation to this particular , uh, stage one project, and, uh, I'm sure that this is going to, uh, be a valuable addition to the assets we have within our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor Middlemas?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, councillor White has outlined the advantages to our community of this, uh, extra work to be done at Arc, but let's look at the cold hard, uh, financial side of it. We are loaning an organisation money for them to improve one of our buildings. Doesn't get any better than that, so I'm totally in favour.
Thank you councillor Middlemas. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? We've had no, uh, opposition, but councillor White, did you want to close? We have had speaker, so we do need a vote. All those in favour? There's nine hands unanimously through, thank you very much. Seventeen-three, contract variations and contracts awarded by the chief executive officer. Do I have a mover here? Councillors? Councillor Gibson? Thank you. Seconder councillor White. Any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this? Councillor White, did you want to speak to this? Any other councillor wish to speak? We've had no speakers, we'll just carry that unanimously, thank you. Uh, seventeen-four is the proposed land, uh, proposed sale of land in Henry Street, Trelgyn. Do I have a mover for this?
I'll move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Harriman as a seconder. Any opposition to this? Councillor Howe, did you want to speak to this?
Just very quickly, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, the piece of land in question is of absolutely no use to anybody except for the people that live at number twenty-one Henry Street. It starts nowhere, ends nowhere, it's just the back of their block. Um, so this is just, um, it's the start of the process for us to be able to sell it to them, so they've been using it for the last twenty years, no rent, memorals, we'll get some money for it.
Thank you councillor Howe, adequately said. Councillor Harriman? Is there any other councillor wish to speak to this? Uh, in opposition or for it? No, councillor Howe, did you want to close? Okay, I'm glad you're happy. It's good. Those in favour? We have nine hands, a unanimous vote, thank you very much. Seventeen-five is the tabling of Assembly of Councillor records. Have a move? Thank you very much councillor Gibson as a seconder. Uh, any opposition to this? Councillor Middlemas, would you like to speak? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak? Any other councillor wish to speak? As we have had no speakers, that has been moved unanimously. We are moving now to urgent business, there are no matters that have been tabled for urgent business this evening? No? All right, thank you very much. We will move, uh, to close the meeting. Um, thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, if I can, just, just to acknowledge that, uh, former councillor, City of Moor Ball councillor, Mr Mazzaro, has managed to stay through the entire meeting in the gallery, so I'd just like to thank Ray for his, uh, his input and, uh, just appreciate him staying the whole night.
And we shall, uh, ask for someone to, uh, close the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you very much councillor Harriman.
Good to second that.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson, all in favour? Thank you very much. All right, we're closing the meeting to the public where we'll, uh, go through some items enclosed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.